Okay, we are going to get started. Started. Good evening. This is the September 4th, 2025 special meeting of the Town of Fairfax Planning Commission. The meeting is being held in person at the Fairfax Women's Club at 46 Park Road. The meeting is also being held virtually on Zoom and broadcast on channels 27 and 29, and live streamed at the town's website and the CMCM website. To participate in the meeting virtually, join the Zoom webinar and use the raised hand feature to provide verbal public comment. The Zoom webinar ID and link are available on the agenda at the town's website, as is the telephone number, where you could call in using the webinar ID listed. You may press star 67 before dialing to hide your phone number, and to speak during public comment time, you would press star 9 to be added to the queue and unmuted when it is your turn to speak. You may also email written comments to the Planning Commission at planning@townoffairfax.org. Comments will be provided to the Planning Commission prior to the meeting and become part of the meeting record, but will not be read out loud. So we won't.
Point of order.
What?
Excuse me, Chair. Point of order.
Yes.
I understand this is a regular meeting, you know, not a special meeting. Because I asked the staff that today when I saw that the proposed resolutions referred to a regular meeting.
We continue something to a date certain. We do it with, sometimes we have to change meetings because of holidays and stuff. If we continue it to a date certain, it's a regular meeting. A special meeting is something that you have to, you know, do an emergency notice 72 hours in advance and all this stuff. And we did notice the regular way, posted it 10 days ahead of time, mailed it out to property owners within 300 feet.
Okay, I did not notice or see that the notice was out 10 days in advance. So if that's the case, then yes, this is a regular meeting of the Planning Commission, and that has just a small tweak to the agenda. But I see here the agenda is set up to include that. Can we have the roll, please?
Swift?
Here.
Bela? Kelly? Petrone?
Here.
Jansen?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Chair Pfeffer?
Here. Thank you. And can we have approval of the agenda, a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll just do a voice vote on that. All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda?
Bye.
Any post? None. Motion passes unanimously. I'll read the meeting protocol now. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the Planning Commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at Planning Commission meetings. The Planning Commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of Planning Commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. All interested persons are invited to participate in public hearings. In order to give all interested persons an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view, members of the audience should, one, limit their presentation to three minutes; two, provide comments by email as described above; three, state your views and concerns succinctly; and four, submit any new documents to the planning staff first directly or via email at planning@townoffairfax.org to be entered into the record. First for our agenda is public comments on non-agenda items. Anyone who wishes to address the Planning Commission on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission may do so via email, in person, or via Zoom in the manner described above in the agenda. Presentations will be limited to three minutes. And we're ready to go if anybody in the room has comments on non-agenda items. And if there's anyone on Zoom, please raise your hand now.
I see no hands online.
Give that a minute. Nothing? Okay. Then we will go ahead and close public comment on non-agenda items and move ahead with our agenda. There's no consent calendar items this evening, so we will go to the first public hearing item, 79 Wood Lane. And can we get the staff report?
Yes.
Seeing our latest.
So tonight, we are considering the required discretionary permits necessary to legalize a partially completed building that was built not in compliance with an issued building permit. This is the first step, is to get the planning approvals and then to get the building permit. And the project is for a partially completed three-story building with a two-story, three-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bathroom residence on the upper two floors and an ADU in the basement. As part of the project, a driveway parking area, retaining wall at the rear of the backyard with a debris fence on top, and a 182-square-foot, one-car garage are also proposed. The project also includes a second-story, 478-square-foot deck at the front of the structure. So the Planning Commission initially reviewed plans for this property on August 19th, 2021, when they continued the project and requested changes to the site development plans. On January 20th, 2022, the Planning Commission reviewed and approved a revised plan set, and a building permit was issued for the construction of that plan on August 4th, 2022. Fast forward approximately three years, the structure is partially completed but not in compliance with the approved plans that were presented to the Planning Commission or with the building permit that was issued. The property was purchased by the current owner, Red River Gum LLC, near the end of December in 2024. The new owner has applied for the required Hill Area Residential Development Permit, Design Review Permit, Minimum Front Setback Variance, Combined Sideyard Setback Variance, and excavation permit required to legalize the partially constructed project. The incomplete structure complies with most of the zoning regulations, including the required rear setback, combined front-rear setback, minimum side setbacks, the lot coverage limitation, the FAR, floor ratio regulation, and the height limits. It does require the approval of a front setback variance because the front access stairs encroach into the required six-foot front minimum setback. One corner of the front access stairs maintains a two-foot setback, but most of the stairs are behind the minimum six-foot front setback. So it needs the front setback variance, and then it needs a combined side yard setback variance because the ADU in the basement, the entry stairs and the window well for the basement ADU project to five feet from one side property line. And the garage is over on the other side, maintaining a five-foot setback there for a combined of 10 feet instead of the required 20. But if you check at any point, you know, the structures meet the 20 feet. The project, including the excavation of the full basement, results in an excavation fill amount of approximately 208 cubic yards of material. So it does require an excavation permit from you. The project geotechnical engineer has reviewed previous geotechnical reports done for the property, the construction that has occurred to date, and has provided all required information requested by the town engineer. The design includes a two-foot-tall landslide debris fence to be constructed on the top of the wall built behind the garage, extending across the full width of the site to catch any debris flow from the hillside above. An inclusion of a landscape drainage detention basin along the east side of the site between the house and the rear retaining wall. A 33-foot extension of the wall behind the house along the east side property line is suggested, if necessary, to keep excess water from entering the neighboring property at 75 Wood Lane. Alternatively, if a retaining wall is deemed unnecessary at the building permit stage, it can be replaced with a two-foot-deep curb to perform the same function. A subdrain system has been included that takes groundwater from around the basement foundation and to the sump pump at the front northeast corner of the house, where the excess water can be directed into the street. The subdrain system and the required ceiling of the basement walls will handle any increased runoff from the site construction and normal runoff from the hillside above the house to protect the basement living space from water seepage. The town engineer has reviewed all the submitted information and has determined that the project can be completed as designed in compliance with the Uniform Building Code, California Fire Codes, and standard engineering and drainage practices as long as two conditions are complied with as the project moves forward towards completion. He must review and approve the building permit plans prior to issuance of the building permit, and must approve an analysis for the debris catchment structure verifying that the structure has adequate catchment volume and strength in the event of an upslope debris flow to correct the project and adjacent structures. The parking complies with the town parking regulations. The front of the house is articulated with the second floor stepped back from the lower floor approximately 15 to 19 feet. The first-floor front wall is articulated with a foyer from which the rest of the house, starting with the dining room, living great room, steps back another two feet. The sides and rear of the house are articulated with various window sizes, use of horizontal siding on the first floor, separated from the vertical siding on the second floor with an architectural band. The roof deck railing will be solid with siding to match that of the house. There are some discrepancies between what you see in the field. There's like a door on one side that was put in. And the plans show perpendicular siding on both the first and second floors. But the door on the side by the driveway is being removed. So the plans you have in front of you represent what the finished project will look like, even if what's in the field is a little bit different. The visual impact of the two-story house on the neighboring properties are minimized by the fact that the house has been almost centered on the site with a nine-foot setback on the east side and 11-foot setback from the west side. Let's see. And although the access stairs to the ADU and the window well to the basement encroached within five feet, they're screened by the existing six-foot side fence from the neighbor's view. The color palette is going to match what was approved by the Planning Commission previously, and you have the color board somewhere up there. The applicant did not submit a landscaping and irrigation plan, as there's little vegetation or any trees left in the area surrounding the structure. Now that the house has been moved to the center of the lot and the driveway has been relocated to the side, and the previous owner got approval for a tree removal permit and removed all the trees, there's pretty much nothing there. But we included a condition in the resolution of approval that a hardscape landscaping plan must be submitted that has been reviewed and approved by the Ross Valley Fire Department for review and approval by the planning director, and all the depicted improvements must be installed prior to the project final inspection by the planning director. We've also included the standard dark sky compliant lighting plan should any exterior lighting be proposed within the building permit application. Staff believes the exterior of the house has been adequately articulated to avoid monotony in its exterior appearance. The scale of the house and the detached garage are in proportion to the building site, and it complies with most of the regulations. And we believe the findings can be made to grant the requested variance of the front setback and the combined side setback. Regarding the excavation amount to create the basement, the extent of the construction that has occurred to date increased the amount of excavation that was supposed to occur in the basement area. But they've removed the ADU from behind the garage, which has decreased the excavation there. So the total amount of excavation that's being proposed is 208, I believe, 208 cubic yards of material. And we believe the findings can be made to approve that discretionary permit. Yeah, the approval of the tree, the Planning Commission approved the removal of one apple tree, five olive trees, and one live oak from the site with the previous approval. And then the owner started construction, took the trees out. So anyway, based on our ability to make findings, we are recommending that you approve the application by adopting the resolution contained in the staff report. Of course, all this occurred before we discovered that there were some issues with the signing of the architectural plans, and so I'm going to let the planning director address that.
So we have a memo in front of you that just came in from the town attorney a little while ago. So if you have any questions on this, let me know. Essentially, it says that a LLC cannot be the plan signatory, that an architect would be required to stamp and sign the plans.
Yeah, I have a question. So what are the implications of that information?
The plans that are in front of you are not signed by an architect, and they're not presented by an owner, which is a natural person. They're presented as an LLC. Therefore, they'd really require an architectural. We would recommend that an architect to review the plans and stamp them prior to approval by the Planning Commission.
And has the town attorney's letter been provided to the applicant?
We literally just got it in time for this meeting.
Well, you provided it to the Planning Commission. You haven't provided a copy to the applicant?
I can hand it to them right now. If you would.
Yeah, it's probably a good idea. If it's the legal analysis for this requirement. No, we haven't opened the public hearing. Thank you.
One related question for the planning director. So I, for the rest of the commission, was on the phone with the town attorney for the five to 10 minutes prior to the beginning of this meeting. And the town attorney said that, I guess, the content of the advice that's in the email that came in this evening was communicated to the applicant on Friday, but I don't know if they received anything or if it came from our planning department.
They were told that we were requiring architectural stamped plans.
But that's just like, we are required.
That was the position of the town attorney, but they hadn't crafted the.
Yeah, nothing but, yeah, nothing but any analysis or detail, just that, basically. And then just one more note I should share from my conversation with the town attorney. The way the town attorney described it is, in her opinion, the application is incomplete without the architect's stamp. That's sort of the status of it in her perspective.
So what is your advice to the applicant based on this information?
Obtain an architecture stamp for the drawings.
I know, but what I'm saying is, would you recommend they approve another continuance pending?
If the applicant was willing to go along with the continuance, I would say that would be appropriate.
Go along with the continuance to give us architectural.
And have time to have an architecture review the plans and obtain an architectural stamp for the drawings.
And otherwise, I mean, I assume that it would be inappropriate to proceed with this matter by the Planning Commission? For example, if we conditioned an approval on obtaining a stamp of an architect?
I would not recommend that.
Okay.
Just to add from my conversation with the town attorney, I asked that as well, if we can include a condition that no building permit or that the conditional use permit is tentatively approved for a period of time pending getting an architectural stamp. And her recommendation was for that not to be the case. She did not, we didn't get the same advice as we had last time, as we should not hear it yet until they determine it. The message I got from the town attorney was, it's her recommendation, we continue until there is an architect signature. But if the applicant doesn't want to agree to a continuance, we can hear it. Her recommendation is that we not approve plans with an architect's signature, and they would have the right to appeal the decision and go to the council. But in her opinion, it's cheaper to continue and get an architect's signature than file the appeal fee and go to the council and do that.
So I have a question for staff. When we talk about the architect's signature or seal, we have three sets of plans. So we have a set of plans for stormwater drainage, G1 through D2, which has an engineer's stamp. And then we have the other two sets of plans that don't have an architect's stamp. So is the stamp required on all three sets of plans? I guess.
Yeah, someone needs to take ownership of all of the drawings. So you can have different professionals on the plans, but somebody needs to take ownership over the kind of, as the master architect over all of the.
So even the stormwater and the drainage ones would also need that as well, in addition to the engineer's stamp?
If it doesn't have a professional stamp on it, yes.
It's got a professional stamp by an engineer, but not an architect. So I'm just trying to clarify.
You could probably accept the engineer's stamp.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so to follow up on that, we have referenced in our proposed resolution the plans prepared by Red River Gum LLC. So those would need the stamp or the architect's signature. The garage and site work plan prepared by DAC Engineering, which would have the engineer's stamp already. The stormwater and temporary erosion control plans prepared by Wildscape Engineering, again, have an engineering firm. And the revised parking plan prepared by ILS Associates. So you wouldn't need an architect to sign that, right? The response to the town engineer's comment from Wildscape Engineering, again, engineer, and the tech, geotechnical report and letters from DAC Engineering, again, engineer, including the previously submitted Hertzog Geotechnical Report, which I assume has a professional certification as well. So really, all we're talking about is the plans prepared by Red River Gum LLC. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
And then I think there may be other issues, which, just to make sure that the plans kind of match and are consistent, we've noticed a few inconsistencies between the architecture plans and the other plans. But then an architect, if you were to engage an architect, they would check for those things. They would make sure that all of the plans, the architecture plans lined up with the structural plans, which lines up with the landscape plans, which lined up so that when you're submitting it, it's all, you know, it all sets up.
Does anyone on the commission have other questions or comments for staff? I think otherwise. My proposal to the commission would be to open public comment to at least hear from the applicant and be able to get their opinion and position before then deciding, you know, maybe we will know more from our conversation with the applicant, what the continuance, whether or not that would happen, or how they prefer to proceed. And then we can decide from there, from the commission's perspective, if we want to not act on the plans and as, under the advice that they're incomplete, or review in light of the advice from the town attorney and have a decision. So happy to hear from other commissioners, if at least opening public comment.
Well, okay, if we're, comments and questions was what I heard you say, which immediately opened up the door to me having a comment before we go into.
Yeah, I'm, yes.
Comments, if that's okay?
Yes.
And the comment is that I'm, you know, I'm really sorry that this analysis was not provided to the applicant sooner. It wasn't even provided to the Planning Commission, obviously, before we showed up here. And I do think that we had a full discussion about the concerns at the Planning Commission meeting, August 21st. And, you know, I would have hoped that you, as an applicant, would have taken the initiative to look into this yourself. Good, I'm glad you did. You know, and so maybe this late coming analysis is not a big a surprise as it might have been if this was the first time that you had sort of understood this question. Because it seems like a very thorough analysis from my perspective. I was a little bit concerned about things like, you know, LLCs have only been around in California since 1996, and I was a little concerned that maybe this language predated the creation of the LLCs. But that language has been amended more recently. And just from a perusal of the information provided by the town attorney, you know, the California Architects Board official guidance, for example, is quoted here. And that seems to me that there's been an intentional exclusion of the LLC from this requirement. So I just wanted to say that because I don't think any of us would be happy with the way this is kind of played out and timing-wise for you. But, you know, it is what it is. So those are my thoughts. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I mean, I think it was very unfortunate that this came in at the last minute, so I'm not trying to make excuses. But I will say the reason, one of the reasons why it was so last minute was that our town attorney reached deep into the well and found a professional that understood this type of thing backwards and forwards. And so it took, whenever you're using a specialist like that, it takes a little bit of a while to get the information because they're very busy people. So anyway, so that is one reason why it took so long and why it was last minute. But it also makes the information a lot more reliable than if it was coming from a non-specialist who is kind of, you know, kind of working out of their lane. So.
Yeah, that's the planning director's comment, with the town attorney described it as her not having prepared this herself, having reviewed it. Being prepared, but I think we will go ahead and invite the applicant to come up and obviously give your perspective and your opinion on how you'd like the rest of the hearing to happen. And we'll do initially three minutes per speaker, but to the extent we have questions, obviously, we'll keep public comment open to continue speaking.
All right. Thank you. Firstly, Linda, thanks for that great description to start with. The only thing I think you said that I feel was maybe incorrect, is you said it's a three-story building. It's really a two-story building with a basement. I'm not sure if that matters, but.
Well, actually, you are correct. Do you know, does the wall extend only three feet or less above the ground? Well, we have our own definition of story. So either here's, I recommend it. In our code, if it's only a basement, if the walls that extend above the ground don't exceed three feet in height above grade at any point.
They don't, yeah.
And so if they don't, then it's not a story. Yeah. Still a living level.
Cool. All right, glad we cleared that up. All right. Respectfully, I understand where everybody sits with this project. I know it's been difficult, and I know with the previous owner, he's created a lot of problems for us. I guess I'd like to start with my first lot of requests from Jeffrey back requiring me for really only four things. And I've supplied those four things plus a lot more at this point. That one was the civil and structural plans for the as-built, including the basement, stormwater calks, a geotechnical engineer, and my civil engineer's stamps and stuff. I've provided all that in great detail. a geotechnical engineer and my civil engineer's stamps and stuff. I've provided all that in great detail to this point. And then the final letter from Miller, your engineer, Miller Pacific, and that states on his page four here that based on our review, we judge that the submitted documents satisfactorily address our comments and we recommend that project process, sorry, project processing be continued to the planning level. Okay, so I feel I've provided everything that's been asked of me to this point in a lot of detail. Minus the fact that I don't have the architectural stamp on everything. I kind of disagree with a lot of stuff here, but this is at a point where it's beyond my knowledge of how to do this stuff. I am a licensed contractor, have been for a long time. And I feel that Jeffrey, as a conversation I had with Jeffrey Friday week ago on the phone, he said that any other licensed professional could sign these documents. So I guess my question would be me as True Blue Builders licensed contractor, why can't I sign my own design documents with the project still being owned by an LLC? Anyway, needless to say, I want to pass it off to Tristan, my friend, to speak on my behalf on these matters because he knows this a lot better than I do. I did. Yeah, I guess I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
You can come back. I just want to, I just want to clarify a couple of things because what Richard's asking is the following. Our understanding, and obviously, we just got the memo. So Chair and Jeffrey, I I hope you can help us understand this. Our understanding is is that the issue is, is that the documents were submitted as with the owner, with the LLC as the designer and the design builder. And that that is the specific issue which this whole person item from the Architectural Practices Act is causing a question. So Richard's question is, and my understanding, this building, vis a vis whatever Fairfax says about what a story above a grade is, the CBC, CDC, California Building Code designates what a story above grade is. And that is what the Architectural Practice Act uses to determine what is two stories and a basement, which is an exempt project. Where I'm going with this is as Richard is an individual, either a licensed professional or as an individual person, which is what Jeff has said is the main contention here is that the LLC per the California Practice Act is not considered a person. So if Richard is considered a person and by the California Practice Architectural Practices Act, this project is exempt from requiring an architecture stamp. What I my question is simply this. Would that be sufficient to allow us to move forward with Richard signing and sealing the documents, which he already has done and could do again, and changing the ownership or changing the, sorry, not the ownership, but changing the designer to his company, True Blue Builders?
Just for order and procedure for right now, if you want to continue your time during public comment, we're going to take the rest of public comment and then we can respond and and answer the questions that come up.
Questions. Thank you.
Anybody else in the room want to give a comment on this project? Yeah.
My name is Renew Malhotra and I live right next door to the project. I've lived there 25 years, so I have seen all the history up close. And I have to say, it's, I think it's a heartbreaking situation that it was a bad project. And a year in December, when Richard purchased it, it was like a surprisingly good outcome to a bad situation. And it's beyond belief how a process like this works and that there isn't someone that can almost like a judge kind of position that could look at the nuances here. When rules are written, they weren't, they didn't have a situation like this in mind where you have an individual who had to get funding for this as an LLC only, but is also a person who plans to build it and live in it. It feels like an exceptional situation that is there no way to review it with the exceptional circumstances involved so that the process can continue? It seems like a tiny technicality that is mind boggling to witness. And it's also, you know, this came up two weeks ago, two whole weeks ago. And to find out now to be requesting another continuance. Anyway, it's just really hard to believe. And it's not that there's any one person that's at fault, but if, you know, just to step back and look at the big picture and to try and move it forward, if there is any way that it can.
Hi. For the record, I'm back again, Blaney White with Cross Country Mortgage. I am the lender on Richard's loan. And I want to clarify again that the reason it's in an LLC is because he stepped up and bought what we deem as a lender, broken construction. It's very difficult to obtain financing for a broken construction project that has previously been red tagged and has no way to move forward. So I believe what Richard did was very brave and he proceeded with an LLC, which is required in order to get financing for a broken construction project. And again, I'd like to remind you that we had a 12-month window in which to complete a unsatisfactory red-tagged project to something that's satisfactory whereby Richard can then refinance as an owner and become a part of this community. And it's a very unfortunate situation that he cannot move forward and is really in financial peril at this point because we don't have enough time now on the loan. I'm hoping that we can get a permit, which I can then turn around and go back for extenuating circumstances to see if we can get an extension to complete this project with the financing that is obtained currently. So I appreciate your consideration of this information because if we can't come to resolution here, it does put Richard in financial peril and it also keeps him from becoming a member of this community. Thank you.
Are there any raised hands on Zoom?
I have no hands online, Chair.
Okay.
Yep.
So this process, oh, sorry. So the process since two weeks ago, I just wanted to make this, put it, put this on record. So after Thursday's meeting and that, I reached out and asked for information that I needed for all this to Jeffrey. Then I emailed again on Monday, I think to Linda, off the top of my head, and asked her if we had an answer from the the attorney on Monday. Linda responded to me telling me that she was waiting for her to get back to to us. It wasn't until Friday lunchtime, 11:30 in the morning, that I received an email from Jeff starting the correspondence of what was going on. We went back and forth a few times and then at the end of the day, towards the end of the day, I responded asking for more questions for him to reach out to the town attorney to get us the chapter and verse and everything, which perhaps that's what I've got in my hands right now. Since then, it's been radio silence. I have not heard from Jeffrey all week this week. And it's been extremely frustrating to me to not get correspondence back and forth. I think it's pretty unprofessional. And I want to leave it at that. Okay, so, thank you.
Does anyone on the commission first have questions for the applicant?
Yes.
I do. And also for the lender as well. So if the lender wants to come up first. So you mentioned that once there was a permit, you would try to get an extension.
Yes.
So when you say permit, what type of permit are you requiring a building permit?
Yes, so he can proceed.
Okay.
Because then based upon that, I can go back and get an exception
Okay.
to get six more months. But, you know, depending on what the weather does between now and then.
Right.
You know, we only have three and a half months left.
Understand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for your question.
Yeah, because this isn't a building permit. That comes later. So that's what I wanted to clarify from you.
Well.
So thank you for that.
Yes, we have technically the remainder of this year and then with a permit, hopefully shortly thereafter, I can get the extension so that he can complete and occupy.
All right, thanks.
Thank you for your question.
Sure. And then I had a question for the applicant. So it seems that a resolution for where we're at now is to have your plans and, correct me if I'm wrong, get an architect's signature and stamp on the plans that we don't have them for. Is there a issue with getting that done? And you're a friend and I know your name was on typed on one of the set of plans. But is that an issue to be able, for you, to be able to do that and then turn the plans back in with that?
There, yeah, there are.
Corrected?
There are. Yeah.
There are liability issues and issues. I've been helping Richard pro bono. So if my name appeared on the plans, it was not intentional. I've been helping him as a friend because I'm, yes, I am a registered and licensed architect and I'm aware of the code and I'm aware of what is and isn't an exempt building. And I think that this is an exempt structure. It is not require an architect. As we all know, none of us were really aware of what the nuances are around an LLC. Accepting that and putting another person or entity's name on the documents as a designer should be acceptable, given the California Practices Act. That's obviously up to staff and the town attorney. At this point, I can no longer work pro bono for Richard. Richard's already out of pocket a lot. But to take on that kind of liability, I need to charge. So I have been acting on behalf of Richard in the background, helping him organize and put this all together. And so, yes, I'm assisting him and advising him, but I have not been in responsible control of the documents in as much of that word. So that would mean that I would have to do certain amount of due diligence for myself that a non-registered person does not does not have to do. So it puts an onus on me. It's an easy way out, but it requires me to take on liability to get out of this situation. And that's that's a situation that I have to look at as an individual and as a professional. And my qualm with that is if this is an exempt building and there's a way to handle it as an exempt building, it allows Richard to proceed under the auspices of what we were doing previously. And if the town is going to require an architect's stamp on a project that doesn't require a stamp, beyond the fact that an LLC is right now listed on the project documents as the builder, not the owner, then we can change the builder and the designer design build to Richard's firm, which would be an individual or based on an individual, no more than any other corporation or partnership is. And therefore, given that the California Architects Act exempts a building that is two stories and a basement, that I see no reason as a professional that that is not a productive way forward.
Thank you.
Anything else, Cindy? Anything else? No?
I have a question staff because of when this was caught and I, you know, am sympathetic to the unpredictability and and sometimes random chance of of when requirements are found and when not, I'm sure plenty of other times in other jurisdictions, someone would not notice this and it would go ahead as is. And notwithstanding the fact that there is potential liability for the town, but we're not catching it in that jurisdiction, you know, it may feel like it's easier. My, so, you know, it's none of us up here want to be in this situation. I know you definitely don't, certainly more so. When you know, we were going to, when this came up on August 21st, without realizing, so was it at the time, and is it still that the planning department's opinion that this would be an exempt project such if if he was the, if it was owned by him individually, it would not require a signature?
It's not owned by an individual. It's owned by an LLC.
No, I know. But I mean, for the the other requirements. So it says here under the Architect's Practice Act, any person may provide, prepare plans for specified exempt buildings. Conventional would, you know, subject to implicit important limits, notably that any portion deviating from conventional framing must be prepared under the responsible control of a architect or engineer. And then it goes on to say, person in this chapter means individual firm, partnership corp, but not an LLC. If this is the reason this is not exempt because of the LLC owner, not for one of the other reasons why a project would not be exempt.
The way that I understand it, and again, I'm not an attorney, I just play one on TV, is that the property is not owned by an individual. It's owned by an LLC, therefore it does not qualify the owner builder exemption for that reason. It's a liability issue. The second reason it doesn't qualify is because you do not have an architecture stamp on the drawing. If either one of those were different, then this could probably proceed. If this, if it wasn't owned by an LLC, it was owned by an individual, it could probably proceed without the architectural stamp. Or if it had an architectural stamp, it could probably proceed. So there's really, those would be the two avenues that the that I talked about with the town attorney that would be acceptable from the town attorney's perspective to allow this to move forward.
Yeah, I guess. And the reason I'm asking here is because and I, you know, I got this walking in, you know, and I had 10 minutes to speak to the town attorney before this meeting started. So it not gone through and read all the references. This is not my practice area, so I'm not an attorney who's normally dealing with architecture, but what I've not seen anything in here to say is that an architect specifically is the person who is required to sign as opposed to it says persons preparing or being in responsible control of plans for others, sign the plans if licensed architect, architect. It says it's a misdemeanor for an unlicensed person to prepare plans for non-exempt buildings, but it doesn't seem to say licensed architect. It seems to.
Yeah, I think it could probably be an architect or engineer. I mean, I'm just my.
Person responsible under the. Under this chapter to prepare plans and specifications or is otherwise licensed in this state to prepare the plans and specifications. or is otherwise licensed in this state to prepare the plans and specifications. So I guess that's my question is, you're a licensed contractor and, and if the owner behind the LLC is a licensed contractor, is that? Can he sign, because then he's signing the plans for someone else? Yeah.
I'm sorry, so is this a question for?
So I guess my question is it. If it had an engineer signed or stamped, would that have raised the same?
So Chair, for me, maybe, so in a simple way to clarify it, I think it's either or, it's the pileup of two things here. So if it's an individual, then he could apply for the owner-builder exemption and he could either make the drawings himself or have somebody make them for him, which would then be either an architect or a non-architect and can stamp it. Because that's the owner-builder exemption, which means you have to be the owner of the property. If, if it's an LLC, and most developers use LLCs for many different reasons, there's nothing wrong with that. They cannot do that. They would have to hire for every component, a licensed individual. The combination of the two creates this conundrum that makes it hard.
But the question, though, I think, goes to, when we look at the analysis, there's number two here that says, who may prepare plans without an architect? And it addresses exempt work. So I think the question is, is this exempt or not exempt? Work.
So, yeah, but we're getting things mixed up. The very first part of this, it says in California, number one, the owner-builder exemption in the contractor's state license law governs construction licensure, not design. And what you were talking about, I thought, was an owner builder exemption for design, not construction.
Just to quickly jump in, I just want to reframe for, for your discussion. I guess the reason I asked this question and from my perspective, the reason we're talking about this is so that if we're saying that we, the town, from our, in our, in our understanding, needs something from the applicant, that we're not being overly restrictive, like we're not saying you need an architect's signature if, in fact, the applicant could come back with an engineer's signature or somebody else that fits the statute. That's what I'm just trying to figure out.
I think the question is, who is this individual plan preparer allowed to be under item two in the first paragraph? And I think, so if we put aside the construction exemption for owner-builder and focus instead on the individual plan preparer question, we find out that that individual plan preparer may not be an LLC. And one of the questions I have for you, Commissioner Jansen, is is this a tiny technicality? Having an architect's certification of the plans for the design of the structure?
It's not, it's about liability. For all parties involved, including the owner. If these things, if there's nobody clearly liable in the correct way, it's stated in law, you'd have a big messy problem. And we don't want to end up again with a project that stops when it started.
And then Chair, if I might, you know, I want to put a question to the commissioners. You know, occasionally, we've given staff some authority to undertake finalization of our decisions, sort of that administrative power. And I'm wondering if we can delegate that power, if in fact, we were inclined to go with a staff recommendation that was there before this issue arose and grant the approval of this application with what other conditions we, we had decided were appropriate, if any? If we could then make it conditional on staff and the planning department being satisfied that the architectural approval, the architect's certification of the plans, you know, was provided and after tonight. You know, which might allow for some slight deviation because it could be that an architect reviewing everything might say, you know, hey, I want to move this wall down a foot or whatever. And if we were to authorize the planning director to finalize our approval. And maybe I should be asking the planning director. I know the town attorney probably wouldn't like this suggestion, but I am trying to grasp at something that would keep the, the ball rolling here as opposed to just stop and, and delay again while this certification is pursued. So I guess I'll put that to the planning staff and director.
Before the planning staff responds, I just want to ask that you consider, I assume also, whatever we do here, if the town council doesn't like it, they can call a special meeting and overrule anything we do because we just have limited authority under what the town council does. We can't prevent them from changing our decision one way or the other.
Right, they can do a directed referral. But I think the concern, though, is liability. As Tristan mentioned, taking on the liability for this project. And who does that if it's not an architect? That's one. The question also is, I think, and that I understand from this, is whether when you look at that exemption process, is, would this be exempt from having an architect do it? So it doesn't, in planning's view, it's, it's not an exempt project under the analysis number two. And I'm just trying to talk through this.
Well, does the Fairfax Code that defines how many stories, that's not what's applicable for the exemption under the state code? Right, what's exempt under state code is the state definition. Correct? Okay.
Per this law, they're saying that, that stand, I gotta read it out loud. Specified for exempt buildings, conventional wood frame one and two-story dwellings and strictly non-structural, non-seismic interior work. So in our code, if your, if the walls of the basement do not, it used to read, if the walls of the basement do not exceed three feet above grade and, and the area is not subdivided for living purposes, it was not, it was considered a basement and not a story.
Right, but that's not my question.
Yeah, so based on our current code.
But that's not my question, Linda.
Standing.
Okay.
It's not a story.
So the, the, the state code is what has the exemption. Right, it's not the
Correct.
Fairfax Code. And the state code, well, I don't see that. Is that something that somebody should pass down to me?
Oh.
I have this from the, this is something else. But what I'm saying is, this is a state.
Attorney, so I should, I should.
Sorry.
Sorry, what's the question?
So there's a state code, Linda, there's a state code. It has an exemption that applies to certain types of structures. And I imagine that the state code defines what those structures are because it's the state exemption.
I would assume so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So in my mind, if the, if the structure meets the state definition of wood frame one and two-story dwelling, regardless of what the Fairfax definition is, the state exemption would be controlled by the state definition of what the dwelling is. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
Okay.
And can I, so on that, having had that to look at, and this is not legal advice to anyone, and I would still suggest certainly looking at this on your own to make sure you're, you're also comfortable with how this is proceeding. But my, the, the, the flow chart, what I'm seeing here is that, and you have right there, section 5537. So it's referenced under number three in the email memo. The signature rules are in, and then it says 5536.1, right? Those first two bullets. So all persons preparing or being in responsible control of plans, specifications and instruments of service for others shall sign those plans, specifications and instruments of service and all contracts therefore, and if licensed under this chapter, shall affix a stamp which complies with subdivision B, the architect requirement, to those plans, specifications and instruments of service as evidence of the person's responsibility for those documents. The failure of any person to comply with this subdivision is a misdemeanor punishable as provided in the section. And does, the section doesn't apply to employees of persons licensed under this chapter while acting within the course of their employment. And then that's clause A. Clause B says, for the purpose of this chapter, here's what a stamp means for a licensed architect, not relevant right now. And then it's clause C says, the preparation of plans, specifications or instruments of service for any building, except the buildings described in 5537, which is the second piece of paper you got there, by any person who is not licensed to practice architecture in this state is a misdemeanor punishable as provided in this thing. So you have to, the plans have to be prepared and signed by a licensed architect, except for the buildings in 5537, which says this chapter doesn't prohibit any person from preparing plans, drawings or specifications for any of the following. And then it has these four things, single-family dwellings, I think is the relevant one here, of wood frame construction, not more than two stories and basement in height. And then it says if the structure exempted by the section deviates from the conventional framing requirements, then you have to go back in and get a licensed architect or engineer. So the flow chart I'm seeing is if the applicant themselves as an individual is preparing the plan for others under 5536.1, and those plans relate to a building that qualifies under 5537, then the applicant is perfectly free to sign them, not being an architect. But somebody's got to sign. I assume part of the reason there's a license requirement normally is, I expect California requires licensed professionals to have insurance for their work and things like that.
But it also says in number two on the email that we had, that an LLC is not included in that list. So of what a person is.
Right, and so I'm saying if he individually, not as the LLC, prepares the plans. Because it's not under the owner-builder framework, it's under this other 5536 thing.
If I may, through the chair, I think we're diving into details where we couldn't go because there are a lot of nuances. And even in reading the text, there are also exemptions to pieces of that. I, you know more about this than I, but I don't think we should try to analyze that because it won't bring us any further. I think the question is, what's the next step, the best step to take? And, right, that's where Commissioner Newton started with. Is there a path forward that doesn't stop the train? We know this has to be resolved and based on the, what we received and based on the planning director's instruction, it seems like it needs to be signed and stamped. Maybe there's other ways that can be maybe figured out later or not, I do not know. What's the best next step? That's the question I think we need to answer.
Yeah, agreed. And I, I know I was doing a lot of reading there. Did not, again, just a disclaimer, do not intend that to be a legal advice for anybody. And would always suggest everybody consult their own attorney who's required to act in their own specific interests, regardless of what they've heard from other people. I guess for me, I was just sort of speculating, is the, is there anything that?
Can, can I, through, through the chair, I mean, if you, if you want, I could lay out a few options if you think it would be helpful.
Yep, that'd be great.
I mean, first of all, I just want to clarify that under the Permit Streamlining Act, we generally have a 120-day window to review projects. So we've been overly accommodating to help get this project through very quickly to the planning commission, which may have been a mistake on our part. Just to put that out there, because it's a, there's some, a little bit unevenness with the applications, some drawings that don't match a little. Normally, we would want everything to kind of line up before we bring it to the planning commission. So we apologize for it being a little sloppy. Normally, we would want it to be a little bit cleaner before we bring it to the planning commission, not riddling you with different things with kind of mix, mismatching drawings. So anyway, so I apologize for that in advance, but we've been trying to rush it as much as we could. But so anyway, so I want to say we are not under any permit streamlining obligations because we literally still do not have a complete application, according to our town attorney. So from a permit streamlining standpoint, we would have another six months from today to, if, if the project was complete. From the time we would get an actual set of drawings with an architecture stamp on it, which would be considered an acceptable complete application, we would have six months from that time period in order to determine whether the project was adequate, according to our regulations. So we are six months ahead of schedule as far as the town is concerned. Now, we want to be accommodating, so I would say that if we wanted to move the applicant as quickly as possible, there'd be two options. We could get a commitment from the applicant to actually work with an architect and that would be willing to put their stamp on the drawing, get commitment from them tonight, and then we would continue it to a date certain. And then we could bring it back in front of the planning commission. The second option, which would also be very expedient, would be just to simply deny the project and allow it to be repealed, appealed to the town council. That would allow a very quick path to either, for the council to either overturn the planning commission decision or agree with you, and then they would have a final decision from the town. The, I would not recommend approving the project without an architecture stamp because, I mean, clearly their architect is not willing to accept liability for the drawings. The town should not accept liability for the drawings either. We should make sure that it's an approvable, clean project. We already have one lawsuit on this particular house site. We do not need a second. So I'd say we want, we want this to be a really neat, clean, approvable project where we're dotting all the Ts and crossing all the, all the Is. I just said that backwards, I realized. But anyway, so architecture stamp with a continuance or denial. Those would be the two options that I would recommend to the planning commission. And either way, I would recommend comments on the design of the project. If you're happy with the design of the project or you do not, or you want to see some changes with the project. Because if it is appealed, it would be good for the town council to have some design recommendations from the planning commission. That would be my recommendation, anyway.
Yes.
Can I ask a question of Commissioner Jansen as an architect? In your experience, what's the timeline like? I mean, I know this is a very unique case, but for a new architect, for a project to come in, review plans and feel comfortable stamping it, what's your sort of guess estimate as to how long that could take?
For a new architect, so somebody that doesn't know the project yet and hasn't worked on it? Right.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's one example. I don't know if there's the previous architect from the previous owner or the current engineer. I don't know if there's the previous architect from the previous owner or the current engineer, but just to give us a sort of sense of it.
Knowing this is urgent, I say four months. Four months. Because if you don't, so that's different for somebody who has already worked on it. So it's a new person comes in, needs to figure out what's going on, then set it all up, go through the procedure. You might find somebody who wants to do it faster, but I'm just not trying to be, you know, I would say four months.
Yeah. And I'm sure there is a fee on that regardless, like just like any law firm would just has an opinion fee for if you want to write an opinion on anything. I think in light of our planning directors comments and that information, the, I am currently leaning towards giving our normal design review comments to the extent we have any, and then putting in our discussion that the reason for a denial is this lack of signature. The applicant can appeal and it would be a lot quicker than four months if they are able to look into this thing themselves and feel comfortable and are able to persuade the town council and the town attorney that the applicant himself as an individual can sign it, then the town council with more time for the town attorney again could approve it there. But I, the main reason why I would not give a conditional approval on the resolution is just they reference plans dated as of a specific date. And if whomever signs it wants to change it a little bit, then all of a sudden the, there's no plans that we approved that are still relevant.
Let me make a note on that. I think some changes to the plans are necessary because the, there are discrepancies, notably between the basement in the structural drawings and the basement in the architectural drawings and the site layout between the architectural and the civil. So those could be corrected, that's not necessarily a problem, but so changes are necessary. And but that can be part of your normal approval process because we can note that. I would think so, right? Because it happens all the time. So some changes are inevitable. But that's not unusual.
Yeah, thank you.
I guess I'm curious about why you think a denial would be a better route than asking for another continuance in this particular case? Because if the applicant is able to get the certifications from the licensed entity that he needs sooner than four months and is able to turn something around faster, I don't know why we would necessarily move forward with a denial and we would leave it up. I mean, I don't know why we would ask for a date certain as opposed to just continuing it up to a potential date certain, you know, to ensure closure, but, but, you know, give the option of coming in again.
Yeah, I guess to that point, one of the, in my conversation with the town attorney, she did not say that we'd have to continue it to a date certain because we would continue it, I guess, pending completion of the application to what the planning director said, the town considers not, would consider it not to be a complete application. I guess in my mind, the reason why I said the denial part is I just assumed it would be faster to be on the next agenda for the town council. But if, you know, they can get the, we're all on the same page on the signature and for a continuance and they can come back the same time or earlier, that's, I would, I think simpler, but yes, commissioners.
So a question for staff. If we were to, to deny it, the one option, can you talk about the appeal process? How long, cost? How, when would it get on the council's agenda?
It is six hundred and twenty five dollars. We, you know, we try to get people on the next agenda at the council, but we really, the planning department has no control over the town council agenda. So it can get full and it could take up to two months to get him on. We, we don't really have control over that part of the process. But I will say that in the past, well, that's not really true either.
And let me say, let me ask a follow up question on that. So let's say it's appealed to the council. Our denial. Should we go that route? And they sustain that denial. Then what happens?
Then, then he either sues the town or gives us the drawings we're asking for.
And start the process or not start the process over, but.
He'd have to come back before you because he wouldn't have obtained an appeal of any of these discretionary permits for the house that was built without permits.
I'll say to one of the commenters' points, and not having an opinion either way on the charter city discussion that the town council had last night, I think it is right that our laws are written pretty rigidly and uncreatively. And there is always the opportunity for towns and states to write codes, to provide more flexibility and more the ability to delegate authority to make broader exceptions and judgment decisions that, but unfortunately, that is not currently the case.
So a practical suggestion, I think either way, we need to give our comments on the drawings because either they have to go to the council or it has to go to the applicant. I think in the sequence of the two options, I think we need the applicant pick their poison. So we could start with asking for the architecture and compliance and then ask for an extension. If they don't like that, the consequences to appeal. So it's not a decision we have to make, I believe. So maybe it's best if we just go through the drawings, look at it, gather input in and then make, take the next step.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I, I expect that after we do our review of the, of the project, we'll probably ask for your input to what Commissioner Jansen said. So I think probably easier to hear the other stuff in case you want to address that too. I guess my input on the design and drawings that I do appreciate having the neighbors here, and I know this has been sort of a very difficult situation for the street historically. And I appreciate that everybody would like to wrap this up, and it does help us in our consideration to have neighbors come in and say that they are happy and very supportive of the project coming in. And, and you know, I think from what I saw there, I don't know how how many other ways there are to deal with the property in the state that this new owner is taking possession of it in and, and building a place to live. I don't have any design change specific comments other than agreeing that we would like to see drawings updated to just maintain consistency throughout the various elements.
Just to piggyback on the notion of all of the comments that we received from neighbors, both in person and written comments, by my count, they were all in favor of the applicant, in favor of the project moving forward. I think that's very encouraging. And so I just wanted to clarify with staff because the initial staff report gave us two options for a resolution, right? It specifically called out the second floor, front facing deck as something we could either approve as built or require removal, right? Because it wasn't in the initial approved plans, is that correct?
That is, but after I went to the site and, and stood on the deck and looked out, I wasn't as concerned about it because it really doesn't provide a view into, a substantial view into anyone's yard.
Right, and I just wanted to doubly mention that not only does it not really provide a view as built, which is with a sort of see through railing. The proposal is also to extend the siding so that the siding itself is not see through. If you're seated, privacy is even greater.
Correct.
Okay, and so there are no neighbors who are advocating for that specific change, the removal of the, the top floor deck?
Now that it's been moved to almost the center of the site and moved forward, it's, it's solved the problem that the original application where the house was further back and pushed to the one side with the previous owner, who also moved it.
Right. And also, this is, I think, an obvious question, but just to get it on record, there's also no neighbor who is advocating for the complete teardown of the as-built structure because it's not to.
We haven't received anything from anybody.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
And on the deck on the front, part of the reason for wanting to have that is the removal in the back of the house of the outdoor decking that was planned there because that's now parking, which is a positive both for the applicant and the house, but also for the rest of the neighborhood, keeping the parking off, off the street. So, you know, in my mind, that was also supportive of having the deck in the front. And like planner Neil said, I was up there on the deck and looking out and I didn't think it was going to be an issue with neighbors.
And also just to say that in the existing neighborhood, there are existing homes with front facing second story decks. Perhaps a smaller size, but they do exist.
This would, this would, this will be the, but you can't see much, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Starting with the deck, I, I did have a slight concern because of the size of it, which is pretty big. So I was worried it's going to be, if you have a whole big party there. But within the concept of the house, it seems to look okay. I personally would recommend to make it smaller, but I'm okay with it if it is this way, so I'm flexible. The biggest comments I had, I think, are more related to the drawings. I think I indicated that already briefly. I think one important thing here is that the, before we had this whole discussion about the LLC, the basement itself is not an exempt structure. That is not part of a regular wood frame building. And that's correct because there is a permit for this. But that's just to indicate why the structural drawings are important. They do not match with the architect. I think the structural drawing shows the old layout or the as-built, I'm not sure what it shows, but the interior doesn't seem to match. I think that's something that is unexpected. I would believe you want to fix that. And of course, the number of parking stalls, which are an improvement over the previous, is not reflected in the civil drawings, which is also unusual. That's just on a high level. The only thing that is regarding that, I think, another important aspect, and that might be something that we want to add in the resolution. The, one of the big things here is how the water comes down the hill and disappears. And there is a catchment structure that is clearly indicated that it need maintenance every year in order to function. And so that might be something, I think the current owner is probably keenly aware of that, but we don't know in the future how it is. So that might be important to stipulate because that needs work every year, apparently. So maybe we want to indicate.
We included our, didn't we include our standard condition that they have to record the drainage maintenance?
If it's there, I skipped it and I missed it, then.
Yeah, and, and they have to put in, they have, the engineer has to recommend the maintenance schedule so that that doesn't happen.
Okay, good, then I just missed it. Thank you.
And then a part of that would also be that a copy of the recorded maintenance agreement is provided to the town after it's recorded and filed.
I have inserted that.
That is paragraph forty nine.
Yes.
We have no other comment from the commission. I think, yes, we should have the applicant come up. And, you know, obviously, I'm sure you have a general response to, to what you've gotten so far, but it seems like the upshot from us is the reconciling of the drawings as the major, not major, but the, the only sort of project specific element. And then we just want to have us, whatever the town attorney will tell us that the town can accept to move, move forward with the project and you know, we will, we understand that you're not getting a lot of flexibility from the town overall, but at least in this circumstance of how you want to, the position you want to be in when you're next coming back to the town in an appeal or off of a continuance. And just on the continuance subject, if we're not continuing to a date certain, my personal recommendation would be to get yourself comfortable with what you're submitting. Send it to planning staff, copy the town attorney if you can, and say, I don't want to come back before we know that this is what you guys are going to accept. And then and then we can proceed from there, then the planning department's direction. And did you?
I just want to say, if you want to, if you wanted to reopen the public hearing, I would like.
I'd not.
If you decide to reopen the public hearing, then just, you know, reopen the public hearing and then take additional testimony. It could be the applicant and other people. And then close the public hearing and then bring it back to the planning commission for your final deliberation.
Yep. So we'll reopen the public hearing, hear from the applicant and, and anybody else who wants to speak on this project.
I'm not exactly sure where to start. I guess maybe Mr. Jensen, I appreciate your comments in relation to you saying that my plans don't coincide with the structurals and architecturals with the basement. We did submit changes a couple of days ago to Linda showing those. And that's on, and they are, they are accurate. I'm not, they do represent what is exactly there. I'm not exactly sure what else you're looking for on there. If you can be a little more specific, I'd appreciate it. In regards to the LLC, my construction attorney in the past has advised me always to purchase property as an LLC, not as an individual. So, and owning the LLC is Richard Bean, myself. So I guess I'm, I am the one taking the liability for this place, for this house, not the town. I have provided everybody with the geotechnical, the structural, the civil, and they've all got their stamps. And to me personally, they're the most, what's the word I'm looking for? Valuable that we need on the plans. Valuable that we need on the plans. Given the structure is built, I'm not asking to really build anything except the garage at the back. All I'm asking for is to finish. So I guess in my mind, if I'm only asking to finish, why do I really need a licensed architect when I can just, as a licensed professional, sign them myself, take responsibility myself and finish the house? I could have the house finished in three to four months and we'd be done. And everybody in the neighborhood would be happy. Me especially. So I guess that's all I want to say.
Just, I'd just like to add a couple of things about the documents. Staff requested on July 8th, after a site visit, that we changed the number of parking spaces that were indicated on the documents. They asked for a site plan. They did not ask for any other documents at that time, nor did they subsequently ask for any documents. So to lay the discrepancies of the elevations on the applicant, I think is unfair because it was requested by staff. We met staff's recommendations and that we then subsequently, as Richard said, when we understood your comments, Commissioner Jensen, did update, send updated elevations and things like that. With regard to the structural, I understand that, but the planning application does not require structural for a design review. So I understand your concern. You're correct. The engineer used the as-built drawings and that will be reconciled before building permit. So we understand your concerns, but to me, that concern is not appropriately addressed at this time because to address structural drawings at a hearing that's about design review, that doesn't in the application require structural drawings, it seems a little bit. Yeah, I get it. You saw it. You would disagree with it. You have concerns about that. I do, I would too. But it's not relevant to the discussion here, if that's understandable. That would be handled by Mr. Lockaby at the building department at the time it's submitted. That's all I have to say.
I just would like to speak to the quality of the work that Richard does with his company. I'm in the process myself of a remodel right now and he's just been extremely helpful and provided names of great contractors that I've been able to work with. So I just want to speak to the quality of the work that would be done and that he plans to move in himself as well. And so he's building it with good taste and choices and quality. And I just want to reiterate again that it's the best possible outcome for this troubled project. And if there was a way to move forward, I appreciate everyone's considerations for finding a way to get through. And it's just ironic that he could have bought it as an individual, could have signed the documents as an individual, but he had to purchase it as an LLC. We're between a rock and a hard place or gridlock and anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any raised hands online?
I have no hands online, Chair.
Yeah.
Just want to reiterate, there was no other financing opportunity for this particular project unless it was purchased in an LLC because the loan product is only available for a business, an LLC as the owner, not as the individual. We can't lend to him in that capacity. So we have money on the table. We have a very qualified, very successful contractor who wants to build with great taste and to all the rules and be part of the community. And so I appreciate everyone's consideration and all of the great input you've had. I'm really just imploring you to please help him some way to have a positive outcome today, moving forward. Please.
Thank you. I will go ahead and close public comment if somebody just wouldn't mind pressing.
Through the chair, did you have a question for the applicant before you closed public comment or not?
Oh. Yeah. So if the applicant, you want to come back, we just wanted to confirm of the two understandably undesirable options. Our preference is to continue it pending receipt of a completed application. But if you prefer us to have a resolution on the motion and you can start your appeal process with the town, obviously we'll do that.
Can you clarify what a completed application is? Because the town has already certified this. My understanding is the only bone of contention is that Jeff requires an architect's stamp. And that is the only thing that is incomplete on this. Is that correct?
That's not correct. My understanding from the town attorney is that in light of their review, the application is not completed until there are signed plans attached to it, whatever meets the requirement.
Which is an architect's stamp or someone else.
Anything that satisfies this question. If you get some, I don't think Jeff is going to weigh in without confirming with the town attorney. And so when you, whenever that response is.
My understanding is that Jeff has already weighed in on this meeting and he's made it very clear that we have two courses of action. One is an architect's stamp and the other is to, I don't, continue or not. There's no third path that Jeff stated when he stated his piece a few minutes ago.
I understand.
I heard from the commission, but that's what I heard from Jeff.
I under, my understanding from Jeff, and obviously I'll let you.
Yeah. Can I explain? First of all, this is not what I am saying.
Yeah.
I am, I have an interpretation from the town attorney that says that we need an architecture stamp on the drawing before this application is complete. This is not a Jeff requirement. This is a state law requirement as interpreted by our town attorney. So you can take that as a recommendation from the town attorney.
Yeah.
And from myself.
But I think that the town attorney did not address the full question, which is if Richard signs this as an individual, taking responsibility as the designer with his company, as the, as counsel debated, that that may be a way that requires, that does not require an architect's stamp. And this is not something that the town attorney specifically addressed. Correct?
So I'm going to be as precise as I can in my choice of words here. It is correct that the town attorney did not address this. What Jeff is relaying from the town attorney is that so far, the opinion from the town attorney is that we need the architect's stamp for the town to consider it a completed application. If it's submitted with that, my understanding from the town attorney and from Jeff's explanation of his advice from the town attorney, getting the architect's signature is what is needed. The extra discussion that you've heard from the commission, at least from me, is if you come to the separate determination that you can sign, that you are signing it yourself and submit it to the planning direct, planning department and there, I'm sure if it's not an architect's signature, going to say to the town attorney, does this meet the requirements that you've said in state law? If they say yes, then the town attorney would say to the planning department and they would say it's a completed application, I guess. Just to summarize, to be complete, we need an architect's signature. Unless you separately are able to get the town attorney to confirm to the planning department that whatever other route you've chosen meets the same requirement.
Okay. Well, if I can refer to Jeff real quick, on Friday, you and I had a conversation and you did say to me, another licensed professional could sign as opposed to an architect, correct?
I, just to be clear for the, I mean, Jeff, even if, even if Jeff said that and believed that he's ultimately going to have to determine, defer to what the town attorney says on what the town can accept and what would meet state law because that's just the way the town government is set up.
Okay.
Sorry. Let me ask a question of the planning director. Should this be continued tonight? With the idea in mind that there needs to be an architect's signature? And in further discussion, because again, the advice that came, the written analysis came today. So if during the time that this is continued, that there is further discussion with the town attorney on this, and there's a different analysis and opinion coming from the town attorney after further discussions, then this could come back to us? With some clarification sooner than?
I think. Well, I mean, right now we have a pretty solid path that if there's an architecture stamp and they review the prime stamp it, then we'd have a complete application. We could come back to the planning commission and consider it for approval or another course of action. The, if there is another professional, like an engineer, it's like, I mean, I I just got this today too. So we would have to go back to the town attorney and that could take a little bit of time for them to research that.
Respectfully, in a lot of other hearings that I get to, the town attorney is at the hearings. Town of Hillsborough, town attorney is there. So they can answer these questions. To me, this telephone with the town attorney is not going to move this forward in a meaningful manner. I think at this point, since there are gray areas, there are discrepancies. Jeff is speaking for the town attorney. The town attorney has been slow. That it seems that the town attorney needs to be in a room so we can have a discussion and understand. And they can listen to what we have to say and we can hear what they have to say because there's still some gray areas, as we've seen tonight on this.
No, if I could through the chair, that I can get the town attorney on Zoom if we need, if we need her.
I assume that though, since this was written by a specialist, the town attorney is going to say.
No, the town attorney is available to come on Zoom.
No, no, I'm saying, but I assume we're not going to get an answer on this specific question because this wasn't responded to.
Must we also bring the specialist?
Yeah.
It would be, I mean, if, it would be worth probably asking the town attorney if she feels comfortable answering the questions. So I would recommend we take a break then.
Well, Commissioner, did you have a?
Yeah. I mean, I think that's beside the point for the moment because I think the real question for you is would you prefer it if we denied your application today so you could appeal that? Or would you prefer us to at least continue it so that this dialogue can continue and be resolved and get moving as quickly as possible?
And I actually, I see your point because if we have the town attorney on the line here, they're still going to have to go back and get it signed. So we're still going to need it continued in that event. Yeah.
I wasn't suggesting that here. I was suggesting we meet with Jeff and the town attorney so we can all be on the same page. And then Richard can talk with me about what's the better way forward.
Yeah.
So that sounds like you would favor a continuance to go through that at this point in time. I know neither choice is.
Deal.
Yeah.
Can I have a second?
Yeah. While you're considering that, I just want to, yeah.
Make a motion to take a break?
Yep.
Second.
Okay.
How long of a break? Five minutes?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Five minute break. It's eight 53. We'll be back at eight 58.
Recording stopped.
All right. We will resume the meeting.
Recording in progress.
We are back resuming our meeting. It's eight 59 and yes.
Hi. I think I have a solution that I'd like to propose. There is nothing that says that he can't be recorded onto title as a natural person in addition to the LLC being recorded onto title, which secured the financing. So we could have the LLC on title, which is securitizing the financing. And Richard Behan, as a natural person, can also be recorded onto title and therefore as the owner builder can sign his own plans. Do I get an A for effort? Please.
I think.
Please.
You get an A for effort. I just, you know, I think we are not, we, we all want you to have your solution here quickly and we don't want to say something that is going to make that more difficult. And if, if you send that to the town attorney and say, hey, look, I'm on the title now, this.
So could we make that a contingency right up until, until before building permit gets issued, that has to occur? Could that be a contingency?
I think the answer is probably that we would have to wait to give you an answer until the town attorney opined on your solution. Right? So maybe you don't have to put your name on the title before you ask the attorney if that would fly. But ask the attorney if that would fly. And if the attorney tells the planning department, yes, that would fly, then put your owner's signature on the submit, and submit. And then you've got, the application would be complete. But you're going to need to get the attorney's buy-in before you take your next step, basically, I think.
We can get her on Zoom. Is it possible to get her on Zoom tonight and we can ask her?
I guess.
We, I just let her off the hook, so she's not a bit.
Well, I mean, my, my question, my, my thought on that is in your position, I would expect, I'd want the email from the town attorney saying this is going to fly before I sent the thing in and regardless, somebody is signing it and would need to, we'd need to have that signed version of the application to approve it. So either.
Is there a way to move forward? If everybody's in agreeance to that and we're just waiting on the town attorneys sign in, weigh in on all that sort of stuff, is there a way to continue to move forward now without having to go through this again?
I suppose we could continue to a date certain. And so we know the date coming up sooner and hope and we're just sort of going to be in the same position of hoping it's resolved by then and we can give you, we would have a meeting date where you know pending that resolution that's happening as opposed to just continuing it pending you guys having.
Okay. I, I think that we, we're still tonight having those two options to deny or to continue. Now, if you continue it, that still allows your creative solution to be, to be put forth to the planning staff and to the town attorney to see if that's something that would be acceptable to resolve this. And then we would have another meeting for you all to come back and finish this process with us. I think, you know, we we can't resolve it tonight with a solution like that. So there's still the two options for tonight to move forward. But again, if we continue it and then there's able to have more of that discussion, you know, that might be the best way to go. And then we have a fast meeting, hopefully to come back. Our next. Our next meeting, our next meeting is scheduled for October 16th. But there's the potential that we could do something different. If there's a resolution to have another meeting sooner, if everybody was agreeable to that.
Isn't there another one in September?
I'm sorry?
Isn't there another one in September before that?
No, because we had this one instead. It's still reflected on the calendar, I know, but it's not a regular meeting.
But you could continue it to a date certain and have one item on the 18th.
How do we do that?
Oh, we would say we are continuing it to, to the 18th and this would be our only agenda item and assuming it's resolved.
Can we do that to the 18th of September?
We have to make sure we're going to have a quorum.
And we have to make sure we have our, uh, CEMCM.
Yes. We already told them there wasn't going to be a meeting and Tamela.
So let me, let me ask.
Not to say that CEMs, I very much appreciate all the.
And Tamela.
Services. Yeah. And Tamela.
I am available.
In limited circumstances, you can have in-person only meetings.
So let me ask, um, in lieu of doing it to a date certain and putting it out two weeks? If we did it just as a continuance? And work through, I guess I would be concerned that setting up a date now to do it might not be enough time to work things out. Is it better just to continue it and then continue to work the effort and then set a time?
So the problem with that is that when, when it's finally decided, if you haven't, if you haven't continued it to a date certain, we have to renotice it. We have to make sure the building's available. It might not be available. You know what I'm saying? The noticing requirements automatically puts it 10 days out, 11 days in reality, because staff has to get the notice out. What do you want to work out this decision, you know, with the attorney? It's, it's 11 days out. And then, then the building has to be available.
Okay. All right.
It appears from this calendar that it's not on our normal meeting date because it's our normal meeting date. It's available in the evening. It also gives everyone a little kick in the pants to work it out in two weeks.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah. Would, would the evening still be reserved because it's the normal date? So that would, it's the best date we can find, I think.
There's a commissioner's available. Is everyone there?
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
PJ?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
No, um, and I, I am not, wanted to be clear. We're not expecting you not to be frustrated with this circumstance. We, we understand and we're not.
Through the chair, if I may, um, just to be clear, summarizing what we can do, there's actually three options now. In the order we talked through them, the applicant could tonight decide they're going to have architect stamp it. We could actually make a motion. I don't think they're interested in that. We could deny the motion. They could appeal it to town council. I think they're not interested. We can, um, extend this meeting to a certain, to a date certain, and they can find another creative solution. It might be the one you found. It might be another one, but there's time to think about that. And that's the one we're choosing.
Well, I, I don't necessarily see the distinction between option one and three. So in my mind, we are simply either denying or continuing. We are continuing to a date certain, which would be the 18th of this month. I don't know if that's special or regular. And then, uh, if it's unable to be resolved, if the ducks are not in a row, then you would cancel that meeting on the 18th potentially. Is that right? Or how would that go? If the ducks were not in a row, if, if these creative solutions had not flown, the town attorney had not approved any creative solution and was sticking to, you need to get an architect certification. And that was going to take a little more time.
Yes.
At that point, if it was before 10 days prior to the 18th and you knew it wasn't going to fly, you would not notice the meeting on the 18th. And if it was within that window where you'd had already noticed it for the 18th.
We would just say it had been canceled.
We canceled it.
Yes.
So that's why I think you're just still down at two options.
No, there's three. The difference in option A is that we can make a motion tonight with that condition and approve.
With what?
That it has to be have an architect's stamp. I understand if it's the choice of the applicant, but that's an important distinction.
Yeah. So before we make our motion, just want to confirm our, understand, just want to confirm before we make our motion. Our, my understanding is our motion will be to continue this until September 18th. Eighteenth.
Right. What did I say? Okay.
Which time the applicant will present a complete set of plans, whatever that is, whatever that's determined to be.
But, but I'd like to also add that we need a fair amount of time with feedback from the town attorney so that it's not like, we don't want to get blindsided again. We want to know if we come back with a solution, everybody's on board with it.
Yes.
We let more time lapse.
Honestly, getting the memo when we came to the meeting isn't really fair to the applicant. I can't, as an architect, basically what I'm hearing, Commissioner Jensen say is, well, you can just fall on your sword and say you're an architect and we'll approve it. And I'd ask him if he was in the same situation, how comfortable would he feel? Um, and so to me, it's like, we're being asked to make a hard decision without having any time to consider the options, to ask our questions, to respond to the attorneys. And I appreciate that you moved this forward quickly, but that's the reason we're in.
No, 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 I understand. And I guess my, the, the distinction is, I guess if we continued it not to a date certain, then it's only coming back when you guys are ready. It's just, it's just.
Time. He doesn't have any time.
No, I understand.
Continue, we need to have a date certain. It has to be the same date. And with respect to staff and the town attorney, we need to make sure that we can get a dialogue with the town attorney so that we can have the questions answered. And we can find out what solution is going to be most appropriate. Because honestly.
Can we speak with her directly?
Yeah. Because honestly, I want to help out. This room here tonight. If I felt, if I felt like I wasn't putting my own property on the line for signing up as the architect, I'd say that.
Yeah.
That's what you're asking me to do. And honestly, with this much time, I'm not comfortable with that.
I get that.
We understand that. And we got the analysis today as well. So we're all in the same boat with that. And, and I understand that. And we're trying to move and do what we can to move it forward. And I know the frustration and I appreciate that. But we are trying to.
Yeah.
We appreciate it. I just respectfully want to make sure that we're not back here in two weeks, having the same conversation and having other people wait for us. I want this to be up.
So the elephant in the room is that we're having trouble getting direct communication from Jeffrey Beeswinger.
So.
And I'm saying it just as, as transparently and respectfully now as I can. I believe that's been part of our delays and we would really like to just work. If there's a way to communicate directly with the town attorney to get that feedback, we could get Richard recorded onto title in a day. We could have the signed plans in another day. But there, there seems to be delays and lack of, lack of communication in a, in a two-way fashion.
Okay. So, yep. So I will address that first, I think. Want to close public comments so we can wrap up? Thank you. You wouldn't mind hitting the button. So, understand all the comments. I think my perspective is Jeff as waits for the town attorney. I'm an attorney. I'm guilty of people waiting for me all the time. It's difficult. One of the reasons, just so you know, I joined the planning commission and got more involved in the town is because I saw how little town staff we had and thought it was nuts. And thought our town's budget was bizarre and the lack of funding. Um, and so you know, this is part of why we all want to see the properties developed because they add value to the town. You being part of the community adds value to the town. All the properties being developed add value to the town, which directly also increases the town budget. And so we have more staff to do things. It's, you know, for a period of time, we had two people in our planning department. And my understanding is that based off of the number of parcels, one fourth of what other Sonoma Marin jurisdictions had. And it's not just the planning department, it's the rest of the town. So, I'm saying this is a way of advocating for anybody to get as involved in the way the town functions as, as you can, because it makes a big difference. It's our, the town's general fund discretionary budget is one third of the total monies they have. It's like 13. The total money is like $13 million. It's school districts are generally like much, much bigger and it's for running a couple of schools. It's we're on a shoestring. I totally get that you're suffering, your situation is, is affected by that. But, um, I promise, I promise you the, the, the town staff would not be here till two in the morning frustrated with the rest of us for many meetings if they didn't. Also want to make sure all the projects get through as expediently as, as they can. And, um, you know, unless anybody else on the commission has anything else to say, I'm happy to get a motion to continue this item until September 18th.
I think there's a question for the planning director. There's a lot dependent here on what the availability is with town council for direct consultation. Is that a possibility?
My understanding is that would have, you know, the town manager would have to go.
A question for the planning director.
Well, I, I will say that neither one of us are the boss of the town attorney. The city manager is not the boss of the city attorney. The council supervises the town attorney directly. The applicant is not the boss of the town attorney. So demands to give immediate answers within a day time period are completely unreasonable. A week time period is completely unreasonable, but we can try. All I can say is that if we do continue this to the next September meeting, it will be tight. And we may not get an answer in advance of the meeting as many days as we would like. So if we really wanted to be, have a more comfortable timeframe, we would pick the October meeting. I think we're willing to go to the September meeting, recognizing that the applicant has time constraints. But you need, but the understanding would be we cannot promise that the town attorney without, on the general fund budget is going to drop everything that she's working on for the town and everything that she's working on for other jurisdictions to cater to the needs of a specific applicant. I mean, we want to move this project forward, but we can only do that within our limits. We did not even collect an attorney deposit for this project because we were not anticipating the need for a town attorney. So we don't have funding resources for this question either.
Okay. Thank you. Either way, I'm asking to moderate the expectations and what's possible. On that note, I would still recommend we shoot for the 18th because if it fails, we can still go to October.
I agree. And that reminds me of the point that the town attorney, someone mentioned at all of these meetings, that's very specifically a budget item that's up every June, July of how much money is budgeted for these meetings and how much of the town attorney's budget is in. You know, a lot of that budget is being taken up right now by random litigation, but.
So going back to the September 18th date, if we don't think that there's time to have those discussions, then we're in the same place we are today with having set a two-week meeting and only getting the analysis today.
So if it's Friday, the 12th or Monday, the 15th, and we don't have the analysis from the town attorney, can we then put up a notice on the town website saying this item in this meeting is adjourned till the next meeting?
I've never experienced, I don't think staff can legally adjourn to a date certain. Doesn't the planning commission have to do that? You can't just, that's not how it works. You know what I mean? Cancel the meeting and you schedule one. Yeah.
Got it.
Well, and, and I will say through the chair, as much as I'm complaining about the tight timeline, I mean, I think it is a pretty simple question. I mean, I mean, we heard the proposal.
Yeah.
Unless the answer is no.
Unless the answer is no, I think, I mean, it's a simple question. So I, I, I think we could probably get that from the town attorney prior to on time. So I just want to, I just don't want to overpromise because again, I'm not a boss. Lynn is not a boss.
I understand.
Nobody in this room is the employer of the town attorney. So.
Yes. And.
And I would hope that staff, you know, I mean, that was just one question, one creative solution, potentially. But I think perhaps with the town attorney, what may be needed is, is a more general discussion on potential solutions like that to see what can be done, more clarity based on this. So it's, it's not necessarily, in my view, just asking the one question. You know, and then getting a yes or no, and then having to go from there. So the hope is that there's more of a, a discussion with town staff, planning and the town attorney and the applicant. I mean, that's my hope to get further information. Through the chair, I, I would agree that a variety of options could be potentially explored. We heard, uh, both the idea of, you know, the individual name being added to the deed. We also heard the idea of the True Blue Builders signing the, the document. So I think exploring a variety of options on our part is wise. And I also think the applicant would be wise to explore the idea of getting an architect's signature and what that's actually going to take. Because that, it sounds like, is going to be the easiest path to moving this forward in terms of everybody being okay that we've checked that box. So I think we've all got to do some, a little bit of brainstorming and, and thought about this. And I just encourage you, if you have a friend who's an attorney, you know, have a, have a look at that yourself. Because as an attorney, looking at this cold who has not, uh, like the chair, practiced in this area, I'm still unclear about how these all fit together and really glad we do have a specialist who is working with our town attorney to. to, to unravel this sort of complex question. So unless anybody objects, I would move to continue this matter to September 18th.
Second.
Motion. Newton, second. Swift, let's take a roll call vote on this, just.
Swift?
Yes.
Petroni?
Yes.
Jansen?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Chair Pfeffer?
Hi.
Okay, this item is continued till September 18th. I think to Jeff's point on who the boss of the town attorney is, it's more like he can't direct the town attorney to talk to you. The town manager probably can't either, but is probably the best person you can ask to ask the town attorney if they're willing to speak to you directly. And that would go to the town council. I, somebody's going to have to weigh in. But I, those are the other avenues I, I, I can think of for trying to get the town attorney directly engaged.
I, I would not raise expectation that there's going to be a conversation between the applicant and the town attorney.
Yeah, and fair, um, fair. And I think the more concrete your suggestion to the town attorney for them to weigh in on, the better, because the town attorney isn't going to want to give you advice on, you should do this. They're going to want to say, okay, you want to do that. We will or will not object. Thank you. We appreciate your patience. Oh, yeah, no, go. We had a break 30 minutes ago, I think. Do we want to do the next item? Okay, yep, let's go.
We don't. I will fall asleep.
So we are now on our second agenda item. Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine Broadway.
Eighty-nine Broadway, yeah.
Okay, this project proposes the remodel of the interior of the old B of A building. If you remember, you approved a design review permit for the, to update the cash machines. So they would like to remodel the bank building, converting it to a health and wellness oriented communal spa and sauna facility that also offers massage treatments. No changes are proposed to the exterior of the building. The applicants intend to design a sign that complies with the sign ordinance, so it can be processed by staff. No exterior color or material changes are proposed to the outside of the building at this time. The project requires approval of a conditional use permit because this type of use is not listed as a permitted use in the central commercial zone where the property is located. This is a result of our code being, I'll say, old fashioned. So there's a lot of uses that have come about since 1973 that are not listed anywhere in the town code. And this is one of them. The code does allow the planning commission to determine that any proposed use is similar to a permitted use or they feel they can approve it as a conditional use that will fit in with the surrounding development. Planning committee, past planning commissions have approved three other conditional use permits in the same downtown core area. They were all on, on Bellinas Road for similar things, a dance school, a yoga studio, a women's, women's fitness club. Prior to the term spa being introduced in the United States, the term bathhouse referred to businesses offering this type of services and experiences. Bathhouse isn't listed anywhere in the town code. The building at 89 Broadway is large by Fairfax standards, and the proposed use will make efficient use of the entire space without the building owner having to divide the building into two or more commercial spaces to attract tenants. The parking is existing. It doesn't meet the current parking regulations for the CC zone, but we ran it by the town traffic engineer, and they believe that the spa use will generate a lot less traffic and require, you know, further parking spaces than the existing, than the pre-existing bank. So we did not, you know, they're not making, they're not adding or expanding the building. We did not require a parking variance. They're not changing the situation. What the town has done in the past when they've approved other new uses going into our older buildings that either don't meet parking or have no parking, they've traditionally added this condition. If the town of Fairfax ever adopts a town-wide shared parking plan, the property owner and tenant should comply with the conditions of the town-wide shared parking plan. I was supposed to say if the town, when the town adopts, that's a better way to put it. When the town adopts the town-wide shared parking plan, the property owner and tenant will comply. We, we were, we feel we were able to make, suggest findings that would support the conditional use permit. We've included them in our resolution. There were, some of the agencies did have some specific conditions which you don't normally deal with. The fire department said it's a substantial remodel. Fire sprinkler system shall be installed. A fire alarm system shall be installed throughout the building, which meets Fire Protection Association requirements. All existing emergency equipment and fire systems shall be serviced and tagged prior to the building final inspection. A knock box shall be installed to gain access to the fire symptoms, systems during an emergency. The box must be ordered from the Ross Valley Fire Department website to ensure that it is keyed to that agency's code. A minimum 2A, 10B, C-rated fire extinguisher boat, fire extinguisher shall be installed for every 3,000 square feet of building and 75 feet of travel. And then the standard two conditions about address size, and you can propose alternate, alternate materials. And the Ross Valley Fire Department said that the sewer cleanout indicated on sheet A100 within Bank Street may be a district-owned rod hole, and they need to confirm the correct designations before filing the required permit with the Ross Valley Sanitary District. And the pools do not indicate any drainage or discharge methods. Swimming pools shall not be physically connected to the sewer system, and where applicable, must have proper indirect drainage and backflow prevention. So anyway, that concludes my report, and we're recommending that you approve application 25-22 by adopting resolution 2025-22, setting forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval.
Thank you. Questions for staff? As for commissioner?
Are hours of operation part of this application?
I believe in their, in their, I believe they submitted in their supplemental information, the hours that they wanted. There's nothing in the town code that regulates business hours. There's no sections. Is that what you're asking? They, they indicated they wanted to be open, I think, to 11, 10 or 11.
Seven days a week.
But it could be similar to other, other businesses, which have, at public hearings recently said, you know, until you start operating, you don't really know when you're going to be needed. And so you go for the max so that you could be, you can, you're not limited. And then as you, you know, you conduct your business, you figure out when the busiest times are. And you could, you could do what you've done in the past, which is say you want to come back and review the conditional use permit in six months if you're worried about the time creating issues.
One of the things I'm worried about, as somebody who lives in the flats, is parking. And that parking lot, since the bank has been shuttered, has served as a overflow parking for downtown. And so, you know, it's interesting to understand what the hours might be to, you know, also understand what the implications are for, for parking in downtown.
Yeah, and I will just remind that through the grace of the owners, they haven't blocked that parking lot off because it is a private parking lot.
Right, it also serves the ATM, however, which is.
It does serve the ATM, yep.
So it's really, the parking is for both the ATM and the.
Right, but not like for the Fairfax farmer's market, and you know what I mean? That's not, anyway, I understand your concern.
Okay, my other question, did frogs require CUP?
Yes, they did.
Okay, well, it's just not mentioned at all in the staff report.
Because the, I don't even want to get into it, but I was unable to find the files anywhere. And it was very interesting to me because I remember them, when they made changes, they wanted to expand or add new hot tubs. They had to go back and amend the conditional use permit. And I cannot address where that information has gone, so.
Sorry, there's also language in the resolution that the fire department provided about the street numbers.
Yeah.
But it's, it's six inches tall, and it doesn't say anything about the backlighting that we usually have in our resolutions about street numbers being backlit and all that language.
Yeah, I think the difference, but I can find, you know, I don't know if it's enough to slow this down. The difference is that, that standard language, you're usually dealing with single-family homes in dark neighborhoods and wooded areas. I think maybe the reason it's not there is because this is a downtown commercial building that I believe this has outdoor lighting that, that stays on at a certain level at night. And I think anyone working for the fire department is going to recognize where they're going. You know what I'm saying? I can't address why they changed it. I copied this straight from their, their.
Yeah, no, I saw that.
Yeah, so. I think homeowners, you know, they, they'll, they'll hide the, the address on the stairs. They'll put it, you know, under the eaves. And I think that that's why they're more specific for residential development.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Commissioner Petroni.
One question on the condition about a potential future shared parking program. Can I get a little more info on what the intent is there? So typically, a shared parking program is the opening up of private.
Well, so, you know, I'm not even sure what that means. And I would check with the planning director because he's been working with the general plan. That, that is an old general plan, uh, dream of the towns is that all the property owners would work together and somehow create a shared parking where no one would block off their parking.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Come first serve.
Right, yeah, I, I think it's a laudable goal, you know, for the, for the future, you know, as, as planning funds permit. I guess just my question is, if we're going to include it as a condition, we should be specific about what it means, right? If we're saying, hey, in.
I, I don't know how to be specific about.
Well, I guess maybe I'm just, I'm trying to, to talk through it here. I, I mean, I think if we're going to say, if the town at any point implements shared parking, you're required to join in. And hey, what that means is that the parking on this site during certain hours of certain days is for public use, not just for the use of the business.
I think the citizens and the groups that, Jeff, do you know if that can, if that goal or policy is still in there about a shared parking thing? It might not even been, be in there in the general plan.
I would have to check. I, I think it, I think it's survived.
You think it's. I think, I think the idea is, is that you have a lot of commercial businesses downtown that, let's say, may not be open at night, for example. So the shared parking requirement would be that if there is a shared parking ordinance that's developed, that it may include things like, you know, my business is nine to five. I've got parking spaces that if my business is closed, those parking spaces can be used at night for other things, so that type of thing. But it hasn't been developed yet, and that would be part of the, the process.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I understand the, the concept of, of shared parking and, you know, what a future shared parking scheme could look like. I'm just trying to understand and to give the applicant and the property owner more information on what we're saying here, right? Because there are varying levels of sort of participating in a shared parking program. There are different hours of different days. There's just putting up sign. I mean, I'm just trying to get at what we mean.
Way this usually works, you know, is when we get enough funding and staff and create a, you know, a group to start working on it, they're the ones that come up with exactly what it means and talks to property owners to figure out exactly what they would be comfortable with. So what it's going to look like in the end and what an ordinance is going to look like, we don't really know. And, and I believe that this condition, just some planning director came up with it because you just keep granting parking variances. Like literally almost every building downtown does not meet the current parking requirements. They should change their parking ordinance so that at least some of the businesses that have some parking comply.
Right, so I guess what I'm hearing is it's purposefully vague because we don't know what it would look like.
The group, it's, the citizens will decide what the final program looks like. And that citizen group hasn't been created. And the ordinance that results from the citizens group hasn't worked its way through the system and gotten approved.
Okay, and this specific condition, I'm sure the applicant is aware of. You've either discussed it with them or they've read it in the staff report. It's not something new to them.
I, I hope you read the staff report, but I, you guys, I've been pretty busy with, with the council packet.
Maybe I'll ask them.
I may have forgotten. Normally I'll say, by the way, applicant, the packets have been posted to the website, but we had problems posting this anyway.
Right, so maybe, maybe I'll just ask the applicant.
And we've done this. This isn't the first business.
Yeah, it's stand pretty stable.
That we've run into with this. So we have been doing it for, you know, the businesses or the CUPs that, that we've done downtown with an increased use.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to have most of my questions for the applicant, but I did have one question for staff that you may know the answer. I'm looking at the plans, A dash, A dot 103. There's two arcades identified. Can you tell me what an arcade is? And if not, then I, I'll add that to my list of applicant questions.
I asked the, I asked the applicant the same question. I think it's just another word for like an arch, but double-checked that with him.
Right, thanks.
Yeah.
That's the only question I had for staff.
Just one quick question for staff, and I understand nobody can remember all the projects that have ever come up. But this reminded me of the project we did at Center in the plaza that also had a cold plunge pool and cryotherapy. Is it just, I assume it's a similar use, but is there something that's distinguishing this project from that one?
This one's going to have hot tubs and a cold plunge and massage therapy. And I don't know that the cold plunge place, I thought that was just literally a couple of plunge tubs.
Yeah.
And the interesting thing, I hope I'm remembering this correctly. I heard it from the building official, is that the environmental health department ended up saying we are not going to have to regulate it when the owner agreed with them that they would empty the tub every single time a person using it. But they're much smaller. They're not like these. These are larger.
And I believe they also had a, have a sauna at the longevity collective.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. Open it to public comment if any members of the public would like to speak if the applicant, um, yep. Thank you for your patience in, in getting this.
And we are in this business, for better or worse. I was born and raised in the area here. We both live in town, and we're raising our daughter here. I'm the owner of a landscape design and construction company and a licensed landscape contractor. And Cameron is, has a background in business operations and helping small businesses bring their visions to reality. So we're here to propose to bring a communal spa to downtown Fairfax. I think a lot of you are familiar with frogs or Shibui Gardens in San Somo, both recently closed. And so, you know, they had like a smaller communal component, and what we're proposing is more of like a gathering space. And what we're proposing is more of like a gathering space for, you know, to bring a friend or family, more of like a social gathering space, sort of modeled after hydrotherapy spas in Europe or something like Calistoga. There's a few others in the Bay Area. So so we're planning to have saunas, spas, a cold plunge and pools of varying temperatures in the facility. And we're really excited to, you know, create a community oriented business here in Fairfax. We plan to partner with local businesses to offer benefits for employees, hire all the staff locally and offer discounts for locals. And generally, this type of business is a pretty low water use. So all the the spas, it's recycled water or it's not drained like this other business. And there are a few showers, but these would all be using high efficiency, low flow fixtures. And so, you know, we feel that, you know, Fairfax has a really vivacious downtown. There's already a lot of bars and, you know, and gathering spaces. And this would be one without alcohol and something to, you know, get us off our phones and connect. And also think that this is like a good cultural fit for Fairfax here. Has a, you know, a bit of a historical wellness tradition with Town and Country, Frogs, a lot of people in healing arts and health minded folks here. And, you know, we really love that. It's such a walkable downtown and we're really excited to incorporate that into our business model as well. And so, yeah, I guess we'd like to emphasize the fact that we're Fairfax residents here. I'm embarking on a really community oriented project. We're not developers and think that the town would really enjoy this for a long time. Look forward to your questions.
Thank you. For we ask the applicant questions, any other members of the public want to speak on this item? Are there any raised hands on Zoom?
I see no hands online here.
Okay, I'm not yet closing the public comment in case we want to ask the applicant questions. Does anybody? Yes, Commissioner Swift.
So can you clarify on the plans, what an arcade is?
Yeah, so Linda was right. It's it's an archway. It's just an architectural term for an archway.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So does the grotto spa have other locations?
No, no, this is the first and only.
Okay, so I went on the website.
Oh, great.
And what I was looking at was, you know, and it's under construction, thermo spa and sauna coming to Marin, right? And underneath that, it has guest reviews for other places called grotto spa. And that's why I was a little confused on the website for this, that there's these other recommendations saying how great the grotto is from somebody in Oregon, somebody in Nevada, Washington. So can you explain what those are in relation to what you want to do and then the website?
So that's that's just all AI generated template. And so that's just when we sign up for the website and auto gen, that's all just fake filler content that we didn't put in there. It's if you actually, since then, it's been updated. So if you'd go on right now, those are removed. So we tried to clean up all the.
Maybe they were removed. I'm not sure. I know you updated it since the first time.
No.
I looked at it.
It's currently up.
All right.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. How many employees do you expect to have? Your additional information talks about a receptionist, spa attendants, massage therapists, and says, I think, four to six during the busiest shift, which you expect to be Saturday from like 11 a.m. to seven. So can you talk about your employees? What you're planning there?
Hi, Cameron. So first and foremost, you'll have us as employees. We work in this thing ourselves. So we'll have, you know, like we mentioned, a desk attendant, a facility manager. So someone who will be monitoring the floors through opening hours and then, you know, overlap a bit during the middle of the day. Cleaner is an attendant, so that's that'll be more of someone who comes in at night, who cleans up the facility. So that won't be on site necessarily at the same time during the opening hours. We'll have cleaning attendants or rather cleaning responsibilities absorbed by the staff who are who are on site during opening hours. And then the massage rooms, we have three that are available at any given time. So, you know, there would be three masseuses potentially at any given time. So let's see, three, four, five is is kind of what we're looking at, but we wanted to give a little flexibility there with the application.
So the massages would masseuses would be the type where they make an appointment and then the masseuse comes in to give.
That's right, yes.
Okay, so they wouldn't be there all the time just waiting. It'd be appointment based. And hours. In the initial website, maybe it was AI generated, that put your hours in there as well. But it had earlier hours. That's been updated to match what is in your additional information. So your thought is that you want to open seven days a week to 11 o'clock at night.
So similar to what Linda was saying, I think we're shooting for sort of flexibility and going to see what the business requirements are. I think we're ultimately planning on six days a week. But for now, I think to start, we're, yeah, shooting for the eight to 11 as 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 windows.
Seven days a week, I think, is what.
Right.
Right?
Just to add on to that, I apologize for interrupting. You know, we want to be good neighbors. We want to be flexible. And so if there is any sort of concern with the hours of operation that we proposed or the days of the week, we're definitely flexible to adjusting that so that it's friendly to the community.
Okay. And this may be hard to answer, but with all of what you provide, you're looking to provide, what are your expectations for the number of customers an hour?
We didn't model hourly. We more looked at it as waves throughout the day. So we had looked at, you know, as yeah, I don't want to say anything that's set in stone necessarily, but, you know, we could handle potentially three waves of 35, but that's that's way more than what we're expecting. Especially, you know, in the beginnings, it would likely be a lot less than that. Maybe a maximum of 35 in a day to begin. But that's sort of what what could potentially be handled.
Okay. And your input said that there would be no alcohol served and you you mentioned that. But will you be serving anything? Will you have drinks or food available?
Yeah, so we're anticipating having like prepackaged goods, you know, coconut water, little drinks in a fridge, spa water in the facility, but no, no, like preparation, prepared food or, you know, something that we'd actually make on site.
Sort of like having a vending machine kind of thing where somebody could buy.
Exactly, yeah.
Right. So and this may not be a question for you all. It may be a question for the property owner. But as Commissioner Newton said, there's two businesses being served at that location, the ATM as well as as your business. So what is the thought as far as controlling parking?
So the ATM has one parking spot and one disabled parking spot set aside for that use. And then we have the rest of the parking lot for our business.
Okay, so the disabled parking spot is probably potentially would be something that would be utilized by your business as well.
There's actually two, at least two. So there's one for our business as well. I'd have to look at the parking map. So there's they're across the lot from each other.
I only recall one, but okay. So do you plan? Because my concern is that there is an ATM there and that how we manage parking in that location for both your business and the ATM where there is an ATM spot, there's one there that's like a, you know, parking for ATM 15 minutes to drive up, hit the machine and go. Everything else I don't believe is is identified specifically for the ATM. So, you know, if you have two people that want to drive in and use the ATM versus going to your business, I just, my questions were related to how you would, if you would, manage that parking lot.
As separate businesses?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think that's all for you all. I think I have a question that I didn't ask staff, so thank you on that.
Yeah. Here.
Okay, cool. And and can I just go back and ask staff a question? Sorry, while I'm thinking of parking. And I had kind of raised this before. We talk about not having additional parking in that lot. And this may not be feasible, but we see now where people will go and park in there. And maybe they're going to the farmer's market or maybe they're hitting the ATM. And they'll be parking along the the walkway that's parallel to the building that would go along where the entrance to the B of A was, which would now be the emergency exit for this building, and they would park there. So what I would like town to and it doesn't have to be now, but I think it would be good to have town staff figure out whether having parallel parking there meets code. So if that were the case, then there's the potential to add two parking spaces. But I don't know if it would meet the the space.
What you're talking about on the site plan A 100?
So on A 100. I have an answer. Oh, well, I can I'm going to shoot her down.
Okay.
So so the code has has aisle widths required in our parking ordinance. And that area is not wide enough for people to legally park there and maintain the drive, the driving width. You're talking about right here along the, this is what you're talking about, right along here, right?
Well, that's what I was asking her to describe. And I think instead of you using your finger, if if Cindy could tell us verbally, so people watching could even understand what we're talking about, I would appreciate it.
So it's the parallel to the building that
by the old front door.
By where the original front door to the bank was, there is a small like walkway there that I was asking if there was space for like two additional parallel parking spaces there.
In front of the emergency exit?
Well, not in front of it, but along that side.
I don't think there's room to maneuver around there, frankly, having used that parking lot for the last couple of decades. I don't think there's room to maneuver around that circle. I mean, I'm not a parking expert like some of us, but I I just don't think there's room if you still had to along the wall there, I don't think you could do it.
Well, and that's the question I was asking staff because it happens now. So I just wanted to get that clarified, whether that would have been legal to put those in.
Sorry, I'm meaningless and I'm a little tired. So the append, the last page of the parking ordinance sets sets width of driveway aisles in parking lots. And this doesn't meet and it's not wide enough to have parking spaces, conforming parking spaces and driveway width. Maneuvering myself.
Okay. That's all the questions I had now. Thanks.
Yes, Commissioner.
Just a few quick questions for you all. Thanks for your presentation and the information. I saw your really great language about sustainable commuting for eventual employees and mention of providing bike racks for both employees and customers. I just didn't see them listed on the site plan. And so I was just wondering if you guys had put any thought behind where you might put those just quite yet.
We're thinking against the building, but I guess the question that we still wanted to figure out was that same walkway you're referring to, if you could parallel park to, if that was required or if that, you know, would be impeded with bikes. And so the reason we left it out is in just in the interest of time of we're not changing the exterior. But, you know, I think once we are able to begin construction, just because of some deadlines we're up against, we definitely would want to explore that. So that's something that we'd still need to figure out.
Got it. The only reason I raise it is just to plant the seed of an idea. I think typically for employees and longer term parking, the biggest sort of incentive for them is secure parking. And so if the parking for employees is in the interior of the building, it's, I think, much more likely encourage them to to want to take their bikes, you know, which a lot of times can be in excess of $1,000 plus, much, much higher too. Just I know that there's on the site plan a break room, just to encourage you to think about maybe potentially providing some employee parking indoors.
We still haven't decided a use for that vault either, so.
Extra secure, right? And another question is, would employees be allowed use of the showers onsite?
Sure, yeah.
Again, in sort of the idea that if they're biking to work, they want to take a shower before seeing clients, et cetera. And then you also mentioned offering discounts or perks for guests who walk or bike. And I guess I just want to encourage you to clearly state that on the website. And then also the confirmation emails that get sent to customers, just to really drive that point home and to make it known so that folks might actually take you up on that offer.
Totally.
And that's that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Newton.
I have a question, I think, for staff mostly. Okay, could you tell me a little bit about the drainage and discharge of the pools?
So that's something that's regulated through the, so this is considered a public pool in California. So there's like a whole chapter about the requiring requirements for that. So generally, we've spoken to a few different people, but one agency said it's actually more normal just to essentially have a pump that would go into like the storm drain system. It's like a slow draining system. But from my understanding, it doesn't connect. There's no direct connection of like a pool drain into the sewer system, which is what the sewer agency brought up. One of those building details that is a little unclear still, exactly how it's going to be built. But I did remember reading a code about that in the in the public pool code in California.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, I think we are ready to close all the comment and bring it back to the commission. I think Commissioner Jansen, you had a question for staff.
Thank you.
Yeah, a question for staff that relates to the former topic.
Yeah, a question for staff that relates to the former topic. I presume that the plans we're looking are promotional materials produced by a company in the Laguna Hills, which is an LLC. Yeah, promotional, promote, those are not plans. Those are promotional drawings for this facility.
I, I can't, this, this new thing that you're throwing at us, I've never ever heard it before. And these are supposed to be preliminary plans. They're not construction drawings. They're supposed to, you know, so the owner can, can get an idea whether their use is approved before they start paying lots of money to have construction drawings designed.
Exactly. That's my understanding. This, it's a preliminary application.
And it is, and it is a little different because it's a conditional use permit. So we're just, we're just kind of looking at the use.
It doesn't get, yeah, it's not like you're on a hillside where you might trigger a landslide if you haven't done test borings and things.
Understood. It's, it's understood. I just want to confirm that.
Oh, okay. I thought we were saying that this.
No, 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 no. I just want to make sure.
Got us a little jumpy.
Did you have other questions for staff?
No, that was the only thing.
Okay. Does, you know, we, commission can have a discussion or move ahead with the motion?
I had a, a couple of grammatical corrections I was interested in recommending. Go ahead, Commissioner Swift.
I think I wanted to have the discussion part before we hit the reso. You had brought up Commissioner Newton, the hours of seven days a week till 11 o'clock at night on this, which is for me a little concerning going into this initially, when we don't have an idea of the volume or use. And our other location has less hours. The longevity place has, you know, less hours. The idea of, we had talked about with the CUP, you could relook it six months down the road and request any changes to support the business.
It would be six months after opening, you know what I mean? So you could, because they don't, they haven't run one before.
Understand. The other questions and thoughts that I have is a little concerned about the parking sharing between the two uses and making sure the ATM has parking for people other than that one 15 minute spot. And if there's ADA spaces, those are going to have, those would be for both businesses on there is my assumption. And then looking at that parking lot to begin with, you can't figure out where the parking spaces are because you can't see the lines for the parking spaces. So one of my thoughts is, is a part of this, that parking lot should be restripped so it's clear where the parking is. And those are some of my thoughts of lowering, you know, changing the hours initially going into this. And then as the business sees what the use is to come in if needed for revision on the CUP, that also gives an opportunity for, to see how, how it fits into the community versus going in and looking at it from like open till 11 o'clock at night every night and then coming in and perhaps needing to reduce that. So those were just some of my thoughts on this.
Through the chair.
Yes, Commissioner Newton.
So I'm curious about what your concerns about the late hours are. What are the, what are the practical concerns that you have from those hours?
I think perhaps impact on the community. I don't know how many other businesses in that area would be open that late. Just a thought.
Yeah, so I guess I'll push back on that thought because to me, I think this is the downtown. We've got bars open till two. I don't know what the Frog's hours currently are, but, you know, people coming out of a sauna or spa at 11 o'clock at night and going on their merry way doesn't necessarily seem to me to be disruptive in this area. I, I just don't see any real concern. For me, the concern with the hours was focused on the overflow parking in the evenings and how convenient it has been for our downtown to have that parking lot as sort of a, a place where everybody can go while that bank is not open. And even when the bank was open, we used it. So I agree with you about the ADA spaces, two ADA spaces that need to be flexible in terms of being available for either the spa clients or the ATM. But as far as restriping, I don't know. I don't think I noticed that you couldn't see where the spots were last time I was there. And and I would disagree about the hours. I would think that it would be, I don't see any problem with being open till 11. I think 8:00 AM is pretty early for somebody to go sit in the sauna. But, you know, I'm not a judger. So, um, but, uh, yeah, so I would, I would be okay with the hours that they are suggesting. And I would agree with you as, as far as the ADA space.
Just to chime in on both those points on the hours of operation, I agree with Commissioner Newton. As I walk home from these meetings every, or Thursday, and when I walk by Fairfax Market that's open past 11 o'clock, it's actually really nice to have an open restaurant or an open business on, on the sort of late night walk home. I'm not concerned about the business hours. On parking, I'm not sure that I necessarily agree that restriping would be necessary, but at least some clear signage that delineates, you know, this is an ATM space. It's 15 minutes, whatever. This is the disabled. I think that would be sufficient in my view. Generally on parking, in terms of parking demand, sort of for this proposed use, the traffic analysis shows that fewer trips will be generated. That incorporated the previous use of a bank plus ATM. And so with this future use of ATM plus wellness spa, I'm not concerned at all about parking generation. I think it's more than ample. I think it's been lovely to have the overflow parking for town and for folks. But as Linda noted earlier, this is out of the kindness of the property owner's heart because it's private property and it's deeded parking. And, you know, if we want to really tackle parking problems, I can say it again, we should do some sort of comprehensive parking management plan for downtown and not sort of bemoan the la, the loss of, with all due respect, the loss of private spaces for public use when it's, it's just a temporary situation. I think that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Just want to note, I'm agreed with Commissioners Petroni and Newton on hours and looked up Frog's hours were until 10:30. So I think, you know, it's not, not that different. And I'm sure they don't want to be open if it's for one customer and have four people and staff waiting. So they'll, they'll, I'm comfortable with them figuring it out. And similar on the parking situation for me, that always seems very chaotic and like a free for all right now. And I think frankly, having a business there that is relying at least in part on that parking lot being functional, it's probably going to make life easier for folks needing to park for the ATM because there will be more eyes on, on the area and fewer people just dumping their cars in and hanging out for the day. Less likely to be the case at that, at least that's my opinion. My only other thought really on the project is, you know, I know you noted your daughter was two months old, so congratulations. Another idea similar to what Commissioner Petroni had just, suggestions for the future, you know, a younger kid's day or hours. I don't, you probably have not been subjected to this yet, but with a seven year old, this K-pop demon hunter is extraordinarily popular and it is a major subplot going to bathhouses. So I'm, I, I promise you, if there was an option for that for kids in Fairfax, if you happen to be open, you'd get a lot, a lot of takers. Yeah, otherwise happy to see the project, happy to see people in the community opening businesses here.
Can I ask the building owner if he would be willing to restripe or those stalls in the parking lot so that they're clear for folks? Thank you.
I'd like to make a couple of grammatical recommendations on the, just very few, very few. On paragraph.
Page first, please.
I'm sorry?
Oh, you're in the resolution?
Yes.
Oh gosh, you can barely see the page numbers. Okay. Countdown paragraphs.
Oh no, I've got to try and find it.
That's weird.
Oh, I'm on the wrong document. Die.
Are yours like deadly visible? Oh, I can barely see. Mine must be going wide. I'm going wide.
Okay. It's the right one? Yes. Okay. Sorry.
That's okay.
I gotta get to the reso. All right. Paragraph. I don't know why this isn't coming up where I thought it was. Let's go to paragraph 19. And it's just the grammar, and I know you took this from Marin Municipal Water District, but we should add the words compliance with at the beginning of that paragraph.
Got it.
And then I wrote paragraph five and I'm looking at paragraph five and it's not the one I thought it was. So now I gotta go back up. Okay, so it's the bolded paragraph five under the first group of whereas is, all the bolded stuff down at the bottom before the next whereas clause, it says the business provides similar services to Frogs. Do you see that paragraph five?
Yes.
And then the second sentence, it says this building, this business will replace that use, comma, reuse the entirety of an existing commercial building, which is in the public interest and for the enhancement of the community. And I think that word reuse should be reusing.
Okay.
And I think there should be a comma before the which. So it's this business will replace that use, comma, reusing the entirety of an existing commercial building, comma, which.
Thank you.
And those are my comments.
Okay.
And I guess, oh, go ahead.
Oh, and then staff mentioned this, but on page five, number 27, deleting the word ever. If the town of Fairfax adopts
Yes, yes.
a townwide, just deleting the word ever.
Oh, I thought you, I thought you want, I thought everybody wanted it to say when the town adopts the townwide plan, which is a more positive attitude about the whole thing. Shall I say that instead? When the town of Fairfax adopts a townwide shared parking plan?
Sure.
Okay.
And is there anything we need to change to address the idea that both ADA spots in the parking would be available to both businesses?
So, so, so bear with me. I've always left parking and ADA requirements up to our ADA specialist, the building official. And so I'm not sure I'll defer to the planning director. If the code doesn't require two ADA spaces, I'm not sure. I showed this built parking plan to our parking, to our building official, who is our ADA person. He, he told me, I believe that what they've done out there now meets the requirements for any use of that building. So.
Okay.
I mean, if you want to include a condition that says have the building official, make sure the parking lot complies with current ADA regulations, I'd be okay with that. But Jeff, I mean, have you ever had someone require?
Yeah, he'll, he'll do the ADA review regardless.
Anyway, with the building permit, you know what I mean?
Okay.
And I'm not even sure there's two. I've always looked at just the one that's by the ball field.
Yeah, I only know.
And the, the plan just has the one.
Yeah.
Okay.
So depending upon the cost of the construction, determines how much you have to put in to upgrade for ADA and that's under Mark's review, so.
Motion time.
Oh, maybe we should add a condition that the owner agreed at the meeting to restripe the parking.
Lot.
That would be good. Prior to the opening of the business.
I would accept that because he was positive about doing that, so. And that just puts it in the reso.
So we'll put it, put it counting on miscellaneous. Okay.
With the changes that Commissioner Swift and I have made, recommended, as well as the striping provision in the miscellaneous section, I would move to approve Resolution Number 202522 of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving the conditional use permit for a communal spa and sauna facility at 89 Broadway.
Second.
Okay, can do a voice phone on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passes unanimously.
Do you have an idea just about when you think you'd be able to open? I know you said 2026. I just thought I'd ask what your thoughts were. You're gonna have to submit building plans and everything, but December 26? All right, thank you.
And then if anybody adds.
Yeah, if anybody wants to appeal, there is a 10 day appeals period. Information on the appeals process can be obtained from the town staff.
There are no discussion items, no minutes to review. Do we have a planning director's report?
Well, this might be really Linda's report, but we did the cannabis business to get approved last night at the town council meeting. That's why we're both a little blurry eyed today.
It was approved, sorry.
It, it was approved, yes. Yes, it took a lot of discussion.
It was a nail biter.
It was, yes. It was a nail biter. And I think the other thing, and I don't want to steal Cindy's thunder, but we had talked about, we, Cindy had a really good idea that we could have a, potentially have a joint work session with the council because they are going to have an overview. with the council because they are going to have an overview. We've been trying, well, the mayor has been asking for an overview of housing laws for months. And I think we're finally going to be able to make that happen. Maybe by the, maybe by the end of this month even, or pretend, most likely by the end of this month. So anyway, so we were thinking maybe we could potentially invite the planning commission to attend that meeting as kind of a joint meeting. So anyway, so keep an eye out for that and hopefully you'd all be able to squeeze it into your schedule, so.
And I think along those lines in the past, and I think it was almost annually, we would have an update on housing laws every year. And at times we've done it as a joint meeting because we have our attorneys provide the update on the housing laws. So it's like, you know, we both get, both entities get the same information, have the attorneys there to ask questions versus just having the town council do it and then Jeff would have to update us. So, I mean, it just makes sense on a lot of levels. So hopefully they can arrange that.
It's a great idea. Yep. And that, that's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner, comments, requests? I've got just, relatedly, I don't, I did not stay for, or listen for the consent calendar to see if they spoke separately about the grand jury report. Does anybody know if they did? The housing grand jury report. So the Marin.
Do you want me to answer that question?
I'd, well, what, did they discuss it?
They pulled it off the consent calendar and they failed to pass it.
Oh, interesting. Wait, they failed to respond this?
It went with a two, two vote. So they did not pass it on to the, back to the grand jury. So that might end up on an, an agenda in October for the town council or potentially this special meeting that would also include the housing update.
Okay, that's odd. But for the, just for the meeting, one thing I was wondering, because this civil grand jury report acknowledges this repeatedly, the economic climate and the costs of materials and labor and interest rates being so drastically moved unfavorably from when the current set of housing element laws and requirements were passed and the Rena numbers. If there's from, you know, the city legal specialists or anybody, any indication from the state on if that's going to affect their assessment on municipalities' work towards their Rena numbers because.
Well, that would be a question we could ask at that joint meeting.
Yeah. That's, yeah, I'm just very curious about that, that part. Yes, Commissioner Newton.
Yeah, just a comment to thank you all for all your hard work, for the bleary eyes, the late nights. Just really appreciate it. I know it was a little tough listening to some of the comments today. And you guys have been working very hard and we know that. So I just want to say thank you. And also for our wonderful CMCN support. You know, thank you guys, especially knowing that you're going to come back maybe for another September meeting. Woo.
We have Airbnbs locally that you could just kind of like stay over.
Not legally you do.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 None opposed? Passes unanimously. Adjourn?
Recording stopped.